I couldn't understand. Then he called me at home.
Oh geez.
Then he called me on my cell phone.
Oh geez.
So.
Are we?
Uh, let me double check to make sure it's streaming.
Oh, what was the minutes? What were the na- date?
Um, March twenty fifth.
Three twenty five.
Get to going.
Excellent. Welcome to County Commission this morning. Today is the eighth of April. Glad to have everybody here today. Um, let's start out with our prayer and our pledge of allegiance. We've asked, uh, emergency manager. Well, let's start with the prayer first. Uh, let's have, uh, Mike Worthing. He's gonna offer us an invocation this morning, and then, uh, George Coulson is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father in heaven, as we come before thee this morning, we give thee thanks for the blessings that thou has given us. We're grateful that the county could meet and discuss the needs of the county. We ask thee to bless the commissioners with insight and, and decision-making processes to make the best decision for the public. We're grateful for the land that we live in and for our soldiers and for the efforts that they put forth to protect this great land. And we say this name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Feet after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's look at our, uh, we've got minutes from our March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four meeting. Any question or discussion on the minutes?
I had a little correction, but John said he can fix it.
Awesome.
It's just a word, so.
If, uh, look for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the minutes, uh, three twenty five, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, warrants or claims, yeah, warrants, claim for, I can't talk yet. Claims for payment from March twenty fifth to April seventh.
Move to approve those. Yes, noted.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Uh, move on to department reports. But we don't have.
It's just commissioned today.
Say, we don't, don't have listed what, we just commissioned?
It's just, just commissioned today. We're, we're, I was gonna visit with Chanel about that. We, this is kind of a schedule that's been made for years and some days we have too many and today we don't have any. We have, we have the one where we usually ask Sam to provide the open meeting training.
Right.
Do you wanna do that again right now?
Absolutely.
Heck, yeah.
Do you have a new round of, uh, awesome jokes and anecdotes for us?
And great pictures.
Has it been, has it been a year since we did that?
No.
I was gonna say that.
It was the start of the year.
Like it, it still seems painfully recent.
But thankfully Sam made it as, as painless as possible. Um, so maybe what we'll do, um, in the future is, is maybe spread them out a little bit more and, and actually fill in this, this date. Yeah. I think there's, there's a reason for, there's a method to the madness and I, and I don't, I don't know it off the top of my head right now.
I got you. All right, well, let's, uh, commission reports.
But instead of, uh, recessing at eight, at ten o'clock, you might build a recess a little bit earlier and be, start at ten o'clock, so.
Yeah, that'd be different.
Absolutely. Uh, Commissioner Wood? I'm not ready. I usually go through my calendar, you know, while other people are, so.
Going?
If you've got yours ready, I'll.
All right.
Get my calendar out.
Okay, um, on March twenty seventh, we visited with Babcock and Layton, uh, just anticipating going forward with the jail and, uh, what were, you know, plans on that. Just, we, it was kind of just a visit. It wasn't, it wasn't very instructive, constructive that way, but they were coming through, so we just talked to them for a minute and, um, and, uh, we will resume those, um, coming up this week on Thursday.
I believe Thursday morning.
Yeah. So, uh, we also, we had on, on the twenty eighth, we had a discussion with the BZI folks, uh, and I believe we uh, will meet with them this afternoon to talk about some of their plans for off the Iron Springs Road, the, the infrastructure and, and that with those, with that. Last Friday, uh, on Fridays, a lot of times, um, once a month or, or sooner, we, um, have the USA CCC, which is the commissioners and council people in the rural area, uh, of Utah and talk about different things. They talked about, uh, several different things, but one of the things that we discussed was conservation easements for farm and ranches. During COVID, we saw how unstable our food sources are and it was concerning. And, you know, as a state, I would really like to, and we talked about this, I'd really like to see more stability in our state. So, um, we talked about the percentage of food that we, um, have, that we produce in Utah. Our fruit needs is, is only three percent. That's not very good. Vegetables is only two percent. Uh, dairy needs is twenty five percent. Now, on, on grains, that's a little higher, ninety five percent. And protein, which is cattle and, you know, the animals, would be, um, a hundred and thirty four percent, which is pretty good. But going forward, by twenty fifty, they figure that our fruit needs will only be one point five. Uh, our vegetable needs will only be one point one. Uh, dairy goes from, from twenty five percent to fourteen percent. Grains, um, from ninety five percent down to seventy one percent and protein from a hundred and thirty four down to seventy. That's concerning to me, very concerning. We're, we're, of course, using up our lands for, for building and that type of thing, but I think that we need to do a better job of that. And that's what some of these conservation easements, um, the NRCS does some uh, conservation easements. They also have a program out of the legislature and they give so much money each year to preserve these lands. Some of them you can take in and out, but the one from the legislature, once you get paid that money, it stays in that, so somebody can run it over the years, but you can't take it back out of that. Um, as, as a rancher myself, you know, I, I don't know, it would be nice to be able to tie those down that, that your property, but you don't know what, what your children want as, as they inherit and, and go forward. My kids are planning on taking over our ranch, but, um, you know, you just never know what, you know, we have two of them, two kids, and so they will do that, but um, other than that, that's about all I had this time.
It's your cousins.
All right. We had a meeting last week with, um, with BZI and their attorneys from Salt Lake. In fact, I think we're meeting today with them. Is that correct? After commission meeting. We talked about, um, one of the big things they need infrastructure wise is they need a sewer line going east to tie into Cedar City's system. And when they do that, they pay for theirs, the size they need, but then the, the, the municipality or unincorporated county, they'll upsize those lines for future growth and they generally use impact fees to do that. So we're gonna talk more about that today and, and see what, what they propose for us. Um, I attended a water meeting last week with Perot and City. They've, they got a, a million dollar grant. Uh, they've hired engineers to study and to implement a project to take water from the, the, the breakwater there, the mouth of the canyon and, uh, and move that through the fairground property and over to, and we've got an MOU with the county so that they can use our pit. Um, the county's pit right there just, uh, north of the fairgrounds for recharge. And they're really excited about that and they should be. The, they're, they're, Perot one's kind of where we were, and I've said this before, but they're kind of where we were about four years ago. They're going through a groundwater management plan with the state. The state is going through these different basins and they're evaluating what safe yield is. Um, in the Cedar Valley, safe yield's twenty one thousand acre feet and we're using about twenty eight. And so they call that water mining or mining. And if you, if you have a bank account and you put more money, take more money out than you put in, you're gonna have troubles. And so that's kind of what the state engineer is charged with is to make sure these basins are safe. And, and that they're gonna start taking away some, uh, water, uh, some of the newer water rights. And so I know that the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District, Cedar City, Eneek others are scrambling, trying to acquire these old rights, the prior to nineteen thirty five, nineteen thirty four rights, so that they can have sufficient water to supply their residents. And that's, and that's, uh, it's really expensive to do that, but they're doing it and, and it's good to see that happening. Um, and so that's exciting for, for, uh, Perot one. When they do that project, when you record how much water you're putting back in the aquifer, the state engineer gives you credit for that. And, um, and we've got about seven over in the Cedar Valley, one in Eneek and six in Cedar Valley. And, uh, they've got, they've got SCADA monitoring stations on each one of those that reports to the state how much water's going to the aquifer and so where we get credit for that, that's a, that's a great thing. It's, it's the one thing we can do. Uh, each, each, so the Perot one valley has a terminus lake as well as Cedar Valley. Uh, Perot ones is the Little Salt Lake and ours is Quichapah. And these are lakes that are captive. They don't, they don't let any water out. They just sit there and they evaporate. They've got a lot of clay under them. The water can't really perk into the aquifer and so, so the more that we can put the water into gravel pits and other areas where it can, it, it can perk down in the aquifer is a, is a great thing. So they're, they're working on that. I'd like to thank Bruce, uh, Bruce Anderson and the road crews. They, they hauled some riprap. Last year wi- with the high runoff from the spring melt, we had a, a kind of a scare with the, with the flood channel right there just s- south of Holy Oak Lane, um, here in Perot one, handling the amount of water. It, we ended up doing fine, but, uh, we ended up widening that channel in places, uh, between us and Perot and City. And, uh, there was a, there's a, there was a pipe, uh, irrigation line there that was, they feel like is in jeopardy. There's just a few inches of soil covering that now after, after that was cleaned. And so, uh, our road crews hauled a bunch of loads of riprap and then, um, Perot one city placed that riprap. And I think that's, that's completed down and.
Dan Jesson.
Yeah, Dan, Dan. They're very, yeah, Dan, Dan, being the, being the farm kid he is, he took care of it, so.
They don't know what they have in Dan Jesson. He's pretty amazing.
Yep.
That was, by the way, his Easter weekend.
Yeah.
Right, right. And that's.
We miss him. I'll say that.
Yeah, Dan's a handy individual where he's grew up on a farm. He can do anything. So we appreciate Dan and, and, and I'm sure Perot one appreciates him as well. Um, I'll be, I'll be traveling to St. Louis next week for the NatCon conference. That's in relation to my assignment on the behavior, five county behavioral health board. Um, haven't gone to all those, but they are good. We, we go to that conference and, and learn about what better ways we can do to serve, uh, the public in regards to behavioral health. And I'll be traveling to that conference this, this, uh, weekend and, and then it'll be next week, coming home next Wednesday. So, um, on a little bit of an unrelated note, um, I attended the, I serve on the construction management advisory board, which is, uh, SUU. They have a construction management program. And I've served on that board for many years and, and what they do is they, they ask for industry, industry experts. Um, I know Zwick, Hughes, Construction, myself, others that are in the trades. And contractors serve on that board to encourage more students to enroll in those programs to learn how to build our buildings. And it's a, it's a good thing. So, uh, that's, that's, that's a fun thing that, that, uh, I was involved in this last, this last week. So, um, anyway, I, we got lots of time. I, I, uh, we, we had a, we had a fun trip to California.
An hour.
I gotta tell you, I, uh, I, I crossed off one of my bucket list items. We, we were in, I dropped my family off at Disneyland. I can only handle so much of that place. And, um, I drove by myself up to Simi Valley, up where the Reagan Library and Museum is and beautiful area up there. I've never been up that far north and, and it was really neat. They, there was a, they had a seven forty seven uh, Air Force One in that building. It's, it's about a twelve and a half mile walk through this exhibits. And, uh, they had a bit, they, they flew the plane. Can't remember what city they flew it into, but they flew it in, Boeing dis- disassembled this airplane, hauled it up to this mountaintop, assembled it and then built this building around. It was really fascinating to see that. That was a plane that served seven presidents from Nixon to George, I think it was George H. Bush. And, uh, and it was, it was fascinating to walk through that and see where they did everything and cooked the food and and then they had a Air Force, they, they had the, what do they call the helicopter they use, um?
Marine One?
Marine One. Yeah, Marine One. Yeah, they had one of those there that they used and it was just really fascinating to see the, the history and the old motorcade that they used and, and, uh, different things. It was, it was a lot of fun, so.
There is one important thing you're leaving out today.
No, don't even call there. Mike, I think it's your turn.
I was gonna leave it, I was gonna leave it alone.
Mr. Cousins Mayor may not be having a birthday today. Twenty nine and holding, I think.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. All right, um, we, uh, had a meeting with, uh, SkyWest Airlines. Um, this was a, this is a meeting a lo- a long time in the making. Um, you know, uh, I serve on the airport board is one of my responsibilities. Uh, and we we have continuous talks about how we can improve our air travel, how we can improve, uh, the schedule, um, with SkyWest. Uh, right now it's not optimum, not optimal. Uh, so, uh, Mayor Green and the, they have an airport kind of a, a committee, a side committee, aside from the airport board. Uh, it involves folks from economic development, tourism, uh, other folks from the community, business leaders. Uh, we're able to put together a meeting, uh, with the president of, of, of the airlines as as well as their chief financial officer. Uh, and it was very, it was very enlightening, um, to talk about some of the challenges. One thing that came out of that meeting that I was really, I, I was, I was reassured that, uh, SkyWest Airlines is committed to Cedar City. Uh, they were, you know, we talked about the realities of some of the things that are going on regulatory wise. Uh, literally come down to the federal, uh, Department of Transportation, um, that are a little bit disheartening. Uh, honestly, there's some issues that go straight to the White House that are holding us back. Uh, I don't know what we're gonna do about that for a minute. Um, but, uh.
We're hoping it changes in the November.
You know, I mean, that, that was really disheartening to actually look at, it's like, here's the paper trail of, of things that are, things that are kind of holding things back. And that's literally where the buck stops. Um, the, the other issue that they're facing is pilot shortage. Uh, we talked about the realities of that. SkyWest has over two hundred planes in warehouses right now, just because they don't have people to fly them.
Wow.
Um, from, uh, COVID, eh, there's a lot of the airlines, uh, a lot of the airlines took a lot of their, uh, COVID money and offered early out packages to senior, senior pilots. Paid them a whole bunch of money to retire early. Um, and so what we're seeing now is folks that are coming to some of these regional airlines and then get their hours, get their captain certification or jumping ship to the big airlines for a lot of money. Um, I think what they said in, what month are we in? In February, I believe SkyWest was actually pilot positive for the first time since COVID. And I think he said they were able to hire four. Like over and above where they were before. They're, they were now like four pilots positive where they were, uh, prior to COVID. Uh, in February, or I believe in March, they were hoping to be, uh, positive twenty pilots, uh, but they're two thousand pilots short. So.
This is SkyWest, not just Delta.
No, this is SkyWest. SkyWest is a thousand short from where they were prior to COVID and they need another thousand. So basically they're two thousand pilots short. Uh, but they feel like they're on the right track. They're like, hopefully in March, we're fifty. You know, just, you know, the reality of it. But I, it was really encouraging. Um, I was in that meeting. Uh, Mayor Green, uh, David Johnson from Economic Development, uh, oh gosh, uh, I've said it before, but COVID stole my name database. Like people that I've known my whole life, uh, were in that meeting. Uh, Dane Levitt was one, uh, representing the Levitt group. Uh, um, Eric Smoots from State Bank was there, uh, and a couple of other folks. This was kind of, they had a, they had a series of meetings. Uh, this was the business sector meeting that I was involved in. Uh, later in the day, they had a tourism uh, type meeting and they had representatives from all sorts of, uh, hotels, restaurants, you know, from the region. Uh, and we all walked away at least feeling encouraged that we're in the, going in the right direction. Um, so we'll have to, it, it's kind of a waiting game at this point, but, uh, SkyWest is really doing everything they can to improve our flight schedule, uh, to, you know, hopefully bring in an addition, at least one additional flight, uh, where we have three flights a day. It's the ultimate goal. It's just, it's gonna take a minute, but, but I was really encouraged by that meeting.
What about the early flight? Any?
That's the one.
Yeah, early, they're, they're, u- ultimately, you want that early flight back. Uh, if we could have an early flight, a midday flight and an evening flight. Uh, they're looking at some different aircraft options, uh, probably smaller aircraft, but more frequency of flights during the day. Um, and again, a, a lot of that issue boils down to Federal Department of Transportation, though that's.
Buttigieg.
What's that?
Buttigieg.
Yeah.
Right?
Pete.
Pete.
Yeah, so, eh, but there, you, you know, there's, there's been a lot of talk about the issue. Uh, it was just really, there, there was a lot of things, there, there are a lot of things shared in that meeting that are, are not public information. Um, but it was, eh, I, I, I left there encouraged, as did everybody else in that meeting, that, that they're working in the right direction and, and we can trust them. I think that's the biggest thing coming out of there is I, I really think we can trust SkyWest. They're really trying to do the right thing. They're up against some issues both federally and lack of manpower that they're really, you know, trying to work through and get on top of. I think ultimately we will have service that we need. Uh, I, I think that Cedar City is one of their top priorities and i- it's just gonna take a minute. So be patient and
Hang in there.
They're doing everything that they can do. Um, we all walked in there with questions, uh, and most of those questions were answered before we had a chance to ask them. They were, they were super open, very forthcoming and kind of laid bare what some of the issues are. Anyway, it was, it was a really good meeting. I, I was very encouraged. Um, uh, George and I had a meeting, uh, with, uh, Air Methods. Uh, Airlife recently came out of, you know, pulled their base from Iron County. We won't go into the reasons. They're, it, it's just not a good situation. There's some, uh, predatory business practices afoot. Uh, interestingly enough, this is something that we talk about in Airport Board a lot, but, uh, so we don't have Airlife anymore. We just have one provider now, uh, Lifelight with Inner Mountain. Uh, George and I met with, uh, Tanya from Air Methods. Uh, just keep those, keep those lines of communication open. It's, that's a really good thing, just to keep that relationship intact. Uh, and hopefully, you know, hopefully we're okay. I, I, I don't know, as far as.
Down the road, will they come back?
I, I hope so. I think we, we always leave that, we leave that possibility open. Um, right now it's a little, it's a little frustrating. It's a little frustrating, but we'll, we'll, we'll make it work. Um, the other, there's a bunch of just little stuff, but not gonna bore everybody. Uh, one thing, so back in two thousand nineteen, uh.
Twenty five minutes.
I know. So that I, I, yeah, nobody wants to hear me for twenty five minutes. I'm just gonna talk of, I, I'm not gonna talk about, I'm going to talk about one more thing. Uh, back in twenty nineteen before COVID, uh, the, uh, restaurant tax and, and hotel tax boards, the TRT and TRCC uh, commissioned a feasibility study for, uh, convention space. Um, that, that feasibility study was provided to the commission back then, uh, and then everything went to hell. So, uh, that has come up again. Uh, we have a request for a lot that we figure we're losing four or five fairly good sized convention uh, events a year, just because we don't have anywhere to put them. Uh, we don't have anything that, that fits the needs. Uh, St. George is actually running out a convention room. They're going to double the size of the Dixie Center is, is in there.
Wow.
I think they're ready to break ground on that fairly soon to, they're gonna double the size of their convention center down there.
The county that's doing that.
Mm-huh. Uh, so we have revisited that, um, with, uh, there's been money set aside in TRCC and TRT since two thousand nineteen to start looking at that. Uh, we're going to just start exploring that more, uh, much like we did with the jail. Um, and, and with our, with talks with, uh, Layton and Babcock, um, that's kind of rejuvenated uh, just an idea of a convention center. Um, so we actually met with Rob Cottle and, and we did this prior to anything that we did with the jail. Uh, we, we had a, and I don't remember what it's called. Do you remember what? Like pre, 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 pre-construction kind of feasibility stuff where we met with Layton, we met with, with Babcock, you know, way before we ever put anything out to RFP.
It was like feasibility of the feasibility study kind of a thing.
Yeah, basically feasibility of the feasibility type thing. So I, I just.
How pie in the sky is it?
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, so I inter, I just, I introduced Maria, uh, to Rob Cottle, uh, their firm, uh, Babcock Engineering, Engineering. Uh, I hope Rob's not listening, cause.
I know.
Architects and engineers apparently.
Don't get along too good.
It's like cops and firemen.
Exactly.
Anyway, I was able to introduce Maria to Rob, uh, to talk about, uh, that pre, pre, pre eye in the sky, uh, type of a feasibility study. Uh, Babcock Design and Layton Construction actually, uh, partnered together to do the Uena County facility. Um, and so this is something that they're really aware, they're, they're well aware of, and this is right in their wheelhouse. Uh, there is money in, uh, Maria's budget to do that. And so they're, uh, they're gonna start looking at that. So, uh, that introduction was made. Well, that's, that's in the.
I spoke a little bit with Maria about it and, and she had a really positive idea about maybe looking for property. If you could tie down some property, even if it doesn't happen for ten or twenty years.
Right.
It, you know, property's gonna keep going up.
Right, right.
And, and where she has that money saved, that may be really a positive. And and where she has that money saved, that may be really a positive thing.
And part of that, part of that conversation was.
Which this is money that cannot be used on anything except for that. We couldn't use it for the jail or anything. Pot of money that has to be used on tourism and that's where it comes from, but.
And so part of that discussion was, okay, let's, if if we can start identifying some property. And then that conversation ties into, okay. Uh if we look at different properties, then we look at different designs that fit that particular piece of property. And it, it's really, it's the same process that we did with the jail. Like this is what kind of design with what kind of property. So it's basically going down that same.
Road.
That same road. And so, yeah, if we can find, you know, a suitable piece of property.
That's one thing that, yeah, that's one thing that I really have seen as a commissioner. That you have to look into the future to help, to help, you know. Facilitate people in the, you know, cause we, we will probably won't, none of us will probably be here. But, but if you can help, you know, it would have been very helpful to have property for the jail years ago. Then people knew that it was there and, but we didn't. We had to start from scratch. So, you know, if, if there's. A way that we can, you know, help facilitate these projects for the future, it would be very nice.
Yeah, and the, just the whole planning aspect and the whole. Getting ahead of the, getting ahead of the curve. Is, and just, you know, planning, cause we're not. I mean, growth isn't slowing down. We're not, we can't, we can't put a fence at the border. You know, so we need to take advantage of those opportunities to bring. Those funds in to, to grow. You know, we, it's, we've said it over and over and over again, but. So, yeah, we're starting to look down. Uh in, in fact, I touched base with Maria again. She's actually met with. I don't know who she met with. She met with several different folks in the hotel industry. Um I I bu, I know that she's been talking with Safari. And I don't know who else to kind of get an idea of what they feel like the needs are. It's what we're really looking for. And we have, we have great events in the summer. In fact, over the weekend, we had the Belgian Waffle Race, which is. It's a, it's a big deal and it brings a lot of, it brings a lot to our community. What we're looking for is kind of those shoulder season events. Uh things in the, in the early spring. Uh in the fall, over the winter, you know, things besides just bringing uh skiers into Brian Head. And so we're kind of trying to figure out what that design might look like. Is it a, is it a pure convention space? Is it a, is it a combination? Uh things that can facilitate sporting events, uh different like indoor tournaments, whether that be basketball or volleyball or. Whatever that is, mixed with a, you know, a traditional convention space. And those are all questions that are way up in the air, but.
I've got one little more thing if I can.
Yeah, please. Oh, please, I'm, I'm done.
Okay. So, this is kind of a personal project, but it'll be a, a really neat project. Um our family is, uh had never got, the Wood family has, had never got a statue on Main Street. Like a lot of the other families and, and some of the Wood folks are, are a big part. Of Cedar City Heritage and, and building Cedar City. So we are in the process right now. If uh we are uh taking donations for a statue. And uh we will place the statue across from the city park. On two hundred North and Main Street on the Porter's property there. And uh, like I said, we're, we're taking donations, so if anybody out there and. You know, you don't have to be part of the family, but it, it's pretty amazing. We, in our discussions of what we wanted to do. Which, which ancestor we wanted to stat, make a statue of. We settled on the third generation uh Wood, um George. So George Wood. Was the first one that came into Iron County. And then George Henry was his son and he stayed in Iron County. And then George Albert Wood. Is the one that we're going to do the statue. And the reason why is because he is such a prominent figure. And he built about sixty percent of the homes in. Before the nineteen sixties, he built about sixty percent of the old homes that are in Cedar City. He was really active in um he, the church, so he built the Rock Church. He um built the El Escalante. Um he built the, the um Train Depot, which that's where we're gonna put. Put the statue on that property. Um he built all of the lodges at all of the different. He worked for the Parks Service and he built all of the lodges at, at all of the parks. Bryce, uh Grand Canyon. He, he was just a very prominent and, and there's two. He had a stamp made and it said Geo Wood. Um contractor, Cedar City. And this little stamp, there's still. Three of them that we've found so far in Cedar City. And he died in sixty-four. And, and that little stamp is in the concrete. Um right by the um Cedar Post Pond, right in the front there, you can see one. And then right behind Ace Hardware on the corner there on one hundred. The, the east side of the street, there's two of them there. One, one faces one way and one faces the other way. Anyway, it, it's a fun project and, and we're hoping to, to set the statue. Uh in October with the Heritage Festival that weekend. Um and uh we're also going to do a. There has been years and years since, since there's been a family reunion, the Wood Family Reunion. We're gonna do that July twentieth. And uh that's gonna be really fun, cause they haven't had one for years and years and years, up to Wood Ranch, of course. And that was property donated by the Wood family. So anyway, that's my two cents.
Okay, awesome. Let's uh, we'll be in recess for about fifteen minutes. We'll come back right at ten o'clock. And get the ten o'clock calendar.
Well, I'm riding John's way.
Thank you, sir.
Nicole, are you gonna be around?
I'm gonna have Evan first. Is he just here for public comment?
Yeah, public comment.
But yeah, if you want to just maybe give him a minute, that might be. You know, I talked to him, I told him I'd give him a minute first. I'm gonna, I'll give him a minute first, then I'll put it up for public comment. Great. And then, yeah, if there's, because we're way down the list. Great.
And you're rolling.
Okay. Welcome back, it's a little after ten. Uh, we got, there's always business that gets wrapped up in the break. Um, we're gonna deviate just a little bit from the agenda. Uh, uh, first, Senator Evan Vickers is here. Um, just gonna give us a little bit of a legislative update. Um, so we'll invite Senator Vickers up for an update. And then, uh, following Senator Vickers, uh, public comments is number seven on the list today, behind a whole bunch of public hearings. Uh, I know there's some folks here for public comment, uh, so we'll, after Senator Vickers, uh, we'll go to agenda item number seven, public comment, and then we will roll from there.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you today. I just wanted to give you a kind of a, a quick, uh, kind of legislative update concerning HB 488, which is the tool we ended up using to, uh, allow you to, at least as a tool if you chose to, and it sounded like you have, to use in construction of a, of a new jail. Uh, I met with, uh, some people here in the audience, actually, Carol Barker and Sinseppi that was here, and some others, that, and we talked about it, and, and, um, and they pointed out, and I, and I agreed, that we did that pretty quick. It was toward the end of the session, you know, and it was, basically, it was a, it was a already authorized, uh, sales tax option for mass transit. Uh, the bill changed the purpose for third through sixth class counties, which typically can't use that for mass transit, so it hadn't been used at all, and utilized it for, for public safety. That's pretty broad, and so, I just wanted you to know that during the interim, I, I contacted our staff and put that on a request to, we have interim study, you guys, you're aware of this, maybe the public isn't, but there'll be a lot of interim study items that go on during the session, during the interim session, and in the committees, determining different things. I asked that to be put on as a parameter, to determine what the parameters could be around public safety, because it could be pretty broad, I mean, so you have to define, you know, obviously, we're not going to try to change anything around, you know, construction, but, okay, can you, can you hire officers, can you use it for equipment, you know, all those things? And so, right now, because of the broad nature, uh, that will be studied, I'm not sure which committee we'll go to, I did get, I did talk to our chief of staff the other day, he did say that the speaker and the president had approved that, to go on the interim study list, so it'll go to one of the committees, I'm not sure which, we'll find out and follow that through, and then, uh, then in January next year, there'll be a piece of legislation, I don't know whether I'll be running it, or somebody from that committee, whatever it's assigned to, will be running it to put those parameters in place on that piece, but I just wanted you to be aware of it, I don't want to raise any anxiety, because it won't, it's not the intent to change what you're doing with it at all, I just, we just wanted to go through a process to make sure there was parameters, except that is kind of a long-going, uh, thing, so anyway, just want, I don't have any questions on that, or comments, or suggestions, I'd certainly be glad to take those back for that process, and, and like I say, you may want to follow that, and I'll try to help, I'll try to kind of keep you aware as that goes through the process, what committee gets assigned to, and, you know, when it's gonna be on the agenda.
Senator, is that tracked through the same process with the tracker, to know what's going with that process, or not really, is it different?
It's a little different, because it's not a bill.
Right.
You know, so it's a little harder to track.
Okay.
Kinda have to, once I find out what committee it gets assigned to, I'll talk to the chairs at the committee, and try to get an idea of when it's gonna be on, hopefully it'll be one of the committees I'm on, but it may not be, because I don't sit on law enforcement or criminal justice, um, so it may not be on a committee that I'm assigned to, um, but I'll talk to the chairs and try to find out when it's going to be agendized, and kind of the discussion, who's gonna lead out.
Can we watch, but it's open to the public?
Oh yeah, yeah, there'll be, um, interims are a little different, you know, you don't always have public comment, uh, on an item, on a particular item, unless it's a, a bill that's being considered for interim, for inter, as an interim bill, uh, and that may end up being that, you know, later in the process, you know, toward maybe, um, oh, October, November, but, uh, it's, I'll, I'll do my best to try to let you know and find out what's going on, and, and also, like I say, I'll talk to the chairs and try to make sure, let them know that I'm interested in that, and I'll talk to Representative Ship, I haven't had a chance to talk to him yet, let him know as, as well on the House side that we're interested in that, uh, you know, ideally, maybe let, we'd be the ones end up running the bill, but I'm not sure if that'll be the case or not, could be one of the members of the committee, especially if it ended up as an interim bill, so.
But we, as, as commissioners, we could talk to the chair and...
Oh yeah, yeah.
And discuss that on...
I think it'd be good, too, you know, as we get to get going through that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm, you know, we want to get the Sheriff's Association, you know, and others involved in that discussion, so that we have a good, healthy discussion, and, and get some good input on it, so.
But there's no danger of us moving forward with our plan, and having something change?
No, there's no intent, intended there at all, so, yeah.
That's awesome.
We sure appreciate all your help with the last legislative session, and kind of the shepherding and mentoring that.
I know it was, it was, buddy in was going multiple directions, and, uh, we ended up getting the one passed that we could get past, so.
Yeah, it was great, thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
I always sure appreciate everything.
Yeah, appreciate working with you, and, Commissioner Blake, you and I talked an awful lot on this, you're kind of the point person, so I appreciate the help you gave us during the session on that, so, thanks.
Well, thank you, we'll, we'll stay engaged.
Okay.
Thank you.
Carol Barker, I just, um, wanna follow up what Senator, Senator Vickers spoke about. We met with him last week. Um, I was in favor of 113 because of the parameters and the guidelines, and the language in 488, I wasn't quite happy with it, I've read it, I've highlighted it, I've dug into it, um, but after speaking with him, I am encouraged that this is a great tool for our county, if we have guidelines and parameters, and that's my challenge to you guys, is to come up with something above and beyond what the state can set, so that it's not so broad that we have fraud, waste, and abuse, but not so narrow that it can only be used for one thing. So, um, I would be happy to volunteer, to meet, to collaborate on language, on definitions, on parameters, I, my, personally, I love the way that Maria Twitchell gives her accounting for the money that's with the tax, uh, the hotel and restaurant tax, so if you guys could model, um, accounting for these funds like that, like how much was raised, where it was went, where it was spent, and where other agencies might come in and request money for projects that aren't covered by their normal budgets, or fundraising efforts or grants, I, I just wanna encourage you and challenge you to set the standard for future commissions, like you said, is you guys are working into the future, and you'll all be replaced at some time, so the next commission needs to have a standard of clear, ethical, and transparent management of the public fund, and I just thank you for what you're doing, I thank you guys for being flexible and working with us, you know I've been involved with this since August 15th, and I continue, I will, I plan to continue to keep coming to these meetings, and, and being involved and helping where I can, I recognize that government of, by, and for the people requires that we get involved and not just complain about things, so I look forward to working with all of you, if, you know, you want some help or some ideas, I'd, I'd be glad to help, thank you so much.
Oh, we appreciate the engagement, thank you. Another public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item number one. Looks like it's gonna be the Reed Erickson Show for...
Quite a while.
A little while?
Sorry.
Which is, which is fine, welcome.
Yeah, my apologies.
Uh, agenda item number one is a public hearing, public hearing discussion, impossible approval of proposed zone change from agriculture 20 acres, 820, to intensive agriculture, IA, for approximately 101.32 acres, lots one, two, and three of, uh, the legal description provided in the agenda, and the address is near 198 South, 1200 West, Newcastle, Utah.
Thank you, Commissioners. This item was tied to a conditional use permit request, and the purpose for the zone change is to accommodate the construction of a digester system for the dairy, and so in order to, to go there, the property needed to be rezoned to intensive agriculture, it's located just out west of Newcastle, and just south of the existing dairy. There is 101 acres and two parcels there, that are, uh, the subject of the rezone. The planning commission did grant the conditional use permit for the digester contingent upon this zone change being approved, and recommended, of course, for the zone change to be approved. This facility is an attempt, uh, at, uh, trying to, to benefit, uh, from the, the product that they have there with manure, that is similar to a digester systems that have been used throughout the country, the only one that we're familiar with in our area is in Beaver County, just across the county line, some of the pig farms, uh, in Iron County fed into that digester system, and they produced, uh, gas that was actually hauled by truck, and this, this, uh, was originally proposed a year ago, for a digester system to be located just north of the existing current, uh, the current lagoon that's there now, for an electric, uh, facility, and was granted as a generator system to put electricity into the grid from the biogas, uh, digester system. And then, uh, the incentives, and, and Jared Holt was at the planning commission meeting the other night, helping explain why that didn't go forward, and it has to do with, uh, challenges and, and lawsuits that are related to the incentives that were provided by the federal government for these kinds of systems, and so that kind of shut them down from proceeding in that direction. The lawsuit didn't affect the, the ability to generate gas, and put the gas into the system, so they're moving forward with this system. Uh, we do have, uh, the expert on digester systems here with us, Alec, um, is here, uh, representing Escalante Farms in this application, uh, to, to explain the technical aspects of how the, the process works, and be able to answer any questions related to that. But essentially, the zone change that's... change that's before you today is to rezone the 101 acres that is immediately adjacent to the south to the other intensive agricultural zone, which is in the green. So the, the green properties are already zoned intensive agriculture. This is an extension of that for the continuation of treatment of the manure, uh, that will do two things. It will help reduce odors and it will generate gas that can be sold and piped into the Kern River Pipeline. They'll have to construct a pipeline that will go from the facility out to the Kern River Pipeline, which is on the south side of the, or yeah, south side of the bench road. And so they've got some work still ahead of them. And we're, we're working with the county engineer and others to acquire rights of way, whether it can be put in the county road, uh, right away. We've, we have that on our agenda for Thursday, staff meeting to talk about that and other options for them to get the pipeline out. But this is for the property itself to have the digester system built on it, uh, which was the conditional use permit. And this is the zone change that allows for that conditional use permit in that zone.
Can I just clarify? So it's adding to that green, which was the, the existing intensive agriculture and you're going to add 101, the, the plan is to add 101 more acres.
Correct.
And it's going from what? A20 to intensive agriculture?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is the, uh, the, kind of the flow out of the barns. It shows the red lines coming out, um, on the, the west end of these barns that goes down, used to go down into this collection system, but now we'll just go down and into the digester and then the, the rest, after the gas is pulled off, the liquid will come back in. It'll have an initial separation from the solids, from some of the solids, uh, and, and make the slurry that goes into the digester system. There are a number of different, this is just a little closer view of that. You can see that it's immediately west of the Milgrove property off of 200 South. This is just an image off of the internet that shows what the, the A, A digester in the ground looks like. They have different types. Some of them go in large tanks. This is underground with a sealed liner and then it has this membrane over the top that captures the gas that's pulled into a, what they refer to as a skid, which is the scrubber treatment system that cleans the gas up so that it can be injected. On the left is just the, the dialogue or the written explanation of the process. And on the right is just a flow chart that shows how that process works and how it gets through to the cleaned up gas in the bottom right from the manure collection, uh, out of the barns. And we spent quite a bit more time with the planning commission going through this process. These are just a couple of graphics also taken off the internet to just explain how that process works and, and a very simple diagram on the top. The animal waste just goes into the anaerobic digester and the separated, uh, the biogas is taken off and can be used as heat or electricity or fuel. In this case, it will be used as fuel and put into the Kern River Pipeline. Uh, they also made provision in the conditional use permit that it could also be used for electric generation should that be more profitable and more beneficial in the future and that the, some of the lawsuits get resolved and the credits are then again available. Because a lot of this, um, uh, is, is motivated out of credits and financial incentives from the federal government and, and funding, also grant funding to help build the digester system through the Department of Agriculture. And they're just trying to figure out better ways to, uh, clean up the waste and make it more efficient and, uh, reduce the gases and the odors. And, uh, reports are that, you know, these facilities help to a large degree with the odors, which have been a problem out there. And, and everyone recognizes that. And I think the Holt's are trying to be proactive and trying to help resolve some of that as well. So that's what the process is. And, and the, the zoning of the property is in a tier four area. So it's, uh, commensurate with agricultural use and, um, the, it just uses the existing waste that's coming off of the facilities now that are being, uh, used to, uh, in two ways. Uh, that's some of the liquid is piped out onto the sprinklers and they, is land applied, which they have to have a permit to do that. And so then the solids are kept out of that as they run it through a sand, uh, drainage that pulls off some of the solids and those are recycled into compost and put back on the fields as well. And this all plays into that same type of system and part of that whole big picture. So that's an explanation of the facility and the purpose for the rezone. And, um, I don't know if you want the applicants to make any kind of more, uh, information available or whether you want to just have them respond to questions, uh, if there are any after the public hearing.
Uh, I think we'll go ahead with the public hearing and then if there's any questions, we'll have them addressed. Uh, chair will declare the public hearing open on agenda item number one. If there's anyone, anyone to comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn the time back over to Mr. Erickson.
Unless there are other questions, I don't have any information to provide.
I, I have one, just kind of a technical question. How have the nitrates been and how does something like this affect? I, I don't know if the nitrates are, are reduced by drying the biogas out. I'm just curious.
I'll let Alec address that. He's better qualified to do that than I am.
Come on up.
Glad. We'd hate to leave Alex sitting here after coming to.
Come all this way.
Could you tell us, sorry, could you tell us your name?
Uh, my name's Alex Snyder Fair. Uh, I am a permit manager for Moss Energy Works, uh, as a part of this joint venture with the Holt family. Um, so on your question about nitrates, um, they are, uh, destructed in this anaerobic digestion process. So, um, what we'll see is any volatile organic compounds, um, phosphates, sulfates, ammonia, um, kind of some of the nastier stuff that may also be used as fertilizer often gets, um, destructed in this, uh, process. Generally speaking, about 80% of our, uh, suspended solids that you might find within the digester gets, uh, destructed and turned into gas, uh, throughout the process.
So, so it actually, so, so in terms of, you know, worrying about groundwater out there, it's actually going to be a significant improvement because right now we're just taking the liquid and pouring it on and then composting. Yeah. I mean, and so, so this is a great improvement in terms in that regard.
Yeah. Um, we definitely help with, uh, groundwater help. Um, some of this information, uh, will come out. We recently applied for groundwater discharge permit, uh, update, uh, recently. This information would also be found in the nutrient management plan, um, that we will, uh, update once we get further along in engineering. Um, some other benefits is, uh, we reduce the amount of evaporate coming off of these, uh, farms. So that allows for more recirculation or irrigation, uh, as the commission mentioned, uh, concerns over water use. Um, so, uh, we've used a citation of about, uh, 12 and a half percent or a little bit larger, uh, reduction in evaporate, uh, through using a covered anaerobic digester. Um, we also generally, uh, as cited by the California Air Resource Board, uh, reduce the methane emissions of a dairy site by roughly one third, uh, of what they could be, uh, without our digester in place.
Cool.
Do they still, uh, filter the waste and put it through their system for fertilizer? Do they still do that too? Or will this, will this change that process?
So they will take out, um, solids, um, through the separator and then sand lanes. Um, that can be repurposed as bedding or fertilizer or compost, depending on, um, what the dairy prefers to use and what's approved in their existing permits. Um, but yes, we can reuse this, um, for irrigation, um, this water coming out of it. Additionally, depending on what kind of air, um, or what kind of gas cleanup system we use, uh, sometimes a byproduct of that is a sulfur based fertilizer in a solid form, um, taking the sulfur out of the gas before we inject it. Um, so that's another possibility for fertilization.
Great.
One other question. I know the, part of the issue out there was, has been flies in the community. Will this help with that problem?
Uh, I don't quite know about if that's going to help. If, you know, if there's still compost on the ground, um, those solids, you know, I expect flies would still
Sure.
Use them. It, it doesn't reduce the amount of, um, you know, water storage in their settling basin. Um, so that's still a, a, you know, a breeding ground for flies. Um, so I, I don't really feel confident in one way or the other.
I'm just curious. Thank you.
Um, I have a comment just that the Holt family and, and their, um, all of their businesses, they're just very proactive. They, they, um, you know, try to do the right thing for the community and, and that type of thing. I, I appreciate, you know, their businesses. It brings a lot of, um, jobs and, and different things to the community and, and, and I appreciate the Holt family for that.
Yep. And we should, um, have a, you know, one or two, uh, operators hired through this process, uh, to take care of the digester and cleanup equipment as well.
Good.
Great. All right. I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Guess we have public hearing?
We did. We had it and closed it. Yeah. Nobody, 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 John's the only one to question.
Answering a text and I might've missed that.
Oh, we've closed the public hearing. Back to Mr. Erickson.
I have nothing else unless you have further questions.
Nope.
We're ready for a motion.
Okay. I would move for, um, approval of the proposed zone change from agriculture 20 acres, A20 to intensive agriculture IA for approximately 101.32 acres and the address is near, uh, 198 South, 1200 West, Newcastle.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on to agenda item number two, public hearing discussion and possible approval of a proposed zone change from agriculture 20 acres, A20 to commercial C for approximately 20 acres located, uh, within the legal description provided. And its address is near 3600 South, 5700 West in Cedar City.
This is a, a 20 acre parcel located just south of Hamilton Ford off of the, just a little north off of that exit of where the Sinclair Station is, Paiute Tribal Lands off of 5700 West and the Belt Route. It dissects this property, the, the Belt Route, 5700 West. Uh, you can see where the tribal lands are in the, in the burnt orange color. And then private, uh, west of that, there are, uh, two properties immediately to the west or east of this that were rezoned recently to commercial. And so this would just help fill in that block between 5700 West and, uh, and the old frontage road with more commercial. The, uh, general plan for Cedar City, because this is in their annexation policy area, we always look at the, uh, the general plans for the cities to see if it's, uh, you know, commensurate with what their intentions are and give them opportunity to comment. You can see that the, the purple color of the lavender is more of a, uh, type of, um, what they call highway, uh, highway service, uh, and commercial. It's, uh, not unlike what could be done in our commercial zoning district. So even though they've got it planned for this rural estate zone, which is the light green and residential, it's adjacent to the other. And with, with those two parcels already being rezoned, we didn't feel like it was really out of line, uh, with what they've got proposed for the future there. So on good transportation corridors, it's got 5700 West is a hundred foot right away and, uh, Old Highway 91 Vandenberg Road, 4000 South. And then it's got a 66 foot, uh, 3600 South master planned road that provides access along the north side of that road.
That might be the most impressive boundary I've ever seen on a map. It was glowing.
There was no question about where that boundary was.
It was, it was clear on the map.
I'm the colorblind guy. Like when you make red lines, I have to kind of guess at what you're saying. Uh, so I'd appreciate it if that was the new boundary line.
Sorry, Reed.
We ought to take those lines off the map and what you're saying. That's a kind of a, it's just a planning area. We ought to get rid of those, I guess. The, the issue with this parcel, and we will address going down the road is, is the separation of the parcel physically by 5700 West. Uh, we always wish when roads are dedicated and, and acquired that we, you know, did a road dedication subdivision and create, because that's still a single parcel, uh, even though it's separated physically on two sides of the road. We, we do have a road dedication subdivision provision that we can incorporate to create a separate parcel on the other side there. But, uh, that doesn't change the fact that their interest is using both sides as commercial. And so we'll just rezone the entire parcel as it exists currently. There is, uh, currently a private well on the, on the parcel. There's no sewer available, so, but they can use septic in that area as others have done successfully. And there are other services in that area. So, uh, as we look at the criteria or the considerations for a zone change, uh, and the evaluation considerations, we just look at, you know, when we rezone a property, whether it can, it has the services available to provide the kinds of things that are the uses that are permitted in that zone and, and how well those services can be provided. And so that's our list that we always have up as considerations. Uh, this property does provide for that. It can have any of the kinds of commercial uses that are in our ordinance and, and the only challenge that they're going to have going forward is water. Uh, with a private well, it would not satisfy a public water system requirement. And depending on what type of building they build, would not accommodate the fire flow requirements with fire hydrants. And so that's been the challenge in this whole area for development of commercial. And at some point, the water conservancy district is going to, uh, be drawn down into that area or somebody's going to develop a public water system that can help serve that area. Right now, the Paiute tribe does have a public water system for their, for their homes and the gas station that's there and the travel center, I should say, and some of their other, uh, interests. And they have acquired some of the other property right there on that interchange and will be developing more commercial there. And so they do have a public water system, but they've not allowed that to be used by others because it does have limited, uh, capacity in their system. So I think we'll see the conservancy district. We've got a subdivision that's being proposed right now. Uh, that's just a little bit north of this that is anticipating bringing a line down from the water conservancy district. And we've met with the water conservancy district and they are, are willing to upsize that line to a 12 inch line, recognizing there's going to be additional need there in the future. And so it's just going to be a matter of step by step, getting that down into that area. And so we don't feel like that that's a hindrance for the types of things. We've got a lot of commercial uses out there right now that, that don't even require water. Um, and this is not a subdivision. We're not requiring the improvements. Uh, we would require that at the time of building permit. So the zone change is proposed for, for commercial and, uh, unless there are other questions, we're ready for a public hearing.
Okay. Uh, chair declares a public hearing open on agenda item number two. Seeing no comment, we'll close the public hearing and go back to Mr. Erickson.
The planning commission did recommend approval, uh, to, to have this property rezoned and, um, I don't believe there are any other questions unless you have any.
No. Call for motion.
I'll move to approve the proposed zone change from agriculture 20 acres, A20 to commercial C for approximately 20 acres located within the description in the agenda. And this is, uh, near 3600 South and 5700 West Cedar City.
I'll second that.
It's moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And the agenda item number three is public hearing discussion and possible approval of a promoted, uh, proposed zone change from residential five, R5 to commercial C for approximately 9.64 acres located within the legal description provided. And this will be near 3000 North Bulldog Road in Cedar City. And Mr. Erickson?
This is a map showing the land ownership jurisdiction. Uh, everything in this, in the shaded area is either Cedar City to the south or Enic to the north. And then the heavy dotted line in between them that runs horizontally is, is the tier two boundary for Cedar City. So it's within the tier two and their annexation policy plan. It is, uh, still unincorporated. Uh, it is right on the corner there, as you can see, of 3000 North and Bulldog. It is right on the corner there, as you can see, of three thousand north and Bulldog Road. Currently, the zoning of the property is R five, residential five acre. And you can see where the star is, that it's a nine, nine point, nine, nine point six four acre parcel. They wanted to rezone originally just an acre and a half of that, uh, to put some, some, um, storage sheds on. That's why they want to rezone it to commercial. And, uh, we, we couldn't do a subdivision to create one and a half acres because they didn't want to provide water there because there's no culinary water without them annexing. And so they decided to just rezone the whole thing. Uh, because it's in the airport overlay, their understanding also was that they would be limited in what kind of residential they could do. And that's the, the lines that show on each side here. It's in the instrument approach zone, which means that it does have some limited capacity for residential, even though we, uh, in our recent, uh, ordinance change for the airport allowed for properties north of three thousand to have residential at one acre per lot on the instrument approach zone and half acre per lot size on the approach zone, which are the areas off of both sides of the instrument approach zone. And, uh, they're aware of that. They, they didn't really understand, I don't think, when they had their original proposal, but I think they still want to move forward with the, with the commercial zoning so that they can create some storage that they intend to do currently. And they can do that now with, um, not without subdividing because then they don't have to provide water. And they can just put some dry lots on there and continue to develop that under that scenario. So, uh, the, the transportation plan, um, is three thousand is a seventy-five foot right away that you can see on the south side. And we do have that water right away width along the south side of that property and then a sixty-six foot right away uh, for Bulldog Road going up the east, uh, west side of the property. So we're rezoning the entire property and we haven't had any comments from any adjacent property owner or there were no comments at the Planning Commission public hearing. And so we're not aware of any, any concerns. They can provide what they need in the commercial zone and, uh, services are available in the area. There's, there is a sewer line that runs right in the street that they can tie on to. And then, uh, they would most likely to get a public water system, have to annex into Cedar City to, to go any further than that. So that's where we're at. Any questions?
No question for me. Consider a motion.
We need a public hearing.
I thought we had the, did we not have the pub? Oh, no, we had the public hearing on the last one.
Yep.
There's a lot of them.
There's a lot of them.
I'm glad you do because I got ahead of myself. So Chair declares a public hearing open on agenda item number three.
Hope there's a comment.
See a comment coming to the podium?
Iron County resident, Dan Justin. I was just wondering if there's been some consideration to the, uh, double, um, hairpin S turn, which is just immediately to the west of this. It is the same property owner that, I don't know, John, if you can roll back to the, to the transportation map.
Now, I grew up on that S turn. Don't be taken, that's, that's like my Mario Andretti.
I know. And unfortunately, there's a lot of accidents there.
Since that we've put up signs, those signs, those turn signs, I don't think we've had anybody go off of it since then.
The reality is, I think, I, I don't know what the plan is to have that be straightened out. I just wonder if this is a legislative act. I don't know if it's going to increase traffic. I'm not here to preach doom and gloom. I'm just wondering at one point, um, sooner or later, this will most likely be annexed into Cedar City. And, um, is that, is that going to be voluntarily done or is this going to be an eminent domain thing? This may be the time to maybe work with the property owner to try to figure out a solution during a legislative decision like this. They need something from the county if they could agree with, I don't know. I just wondered if that has been considered in, in this. Is that, that's my only comment.
If you would like, I would respond to Mr. Glimm and Zoom's comment.
Absolutely.
There is no alignment, uh, need on this property. This property is clean and it's straight. The curve doesn't start, even though it's the same property owner who owns the property to the west, we have had conversations with him through the engineer. Uh, Michael Platt works, uh, with, serves on the County Planning Commission and we've had discussions about this. Uh, and as you can see on this map, we are planning to realign that. There's just a little bit of a, of a straightening right here, uh, can straighten out those curves. It would affect the property owners on both sides of the road. Uh, and there, we have expressed our concern that that can be done in the future. And so I think as more development occurred on this property, I think that that could occur. We really don't have anything. I, I, I don't feel just because it's the same property owner that we can do an exaction or a commitment on this and, and there's no contract zoning. We can't get an obligation out of something that isn't affected by this property being rezoned. There is to the west and we can when we get to that property. And we have looked at that and, and felt like that that's. We did, yep. Not currently, but there will be. Uh, they recognize that that has the future. And, and they're willing to work with us even outside of development at the time that we're ready to do that. Uh, if we do it, but they're, they're, they're requiring them to do that would be only when that property is subdivided. And so if the county were willing to initiate that, they would be willing to help us realign that. So that's where we're at. Any questions about that?
Any other comments in public hearing? Chair declares the public hearing closed.
Again, the criteria that we looked at and review with the Planning Commission and staff uh, can accommodate any of the uses that are, are proposed in commercial zone.
Ready for motion?
Ready for motion.
Uh, I would move for approval of the proposed zone change from residential five acre R five to commercial C for, um, approximately nine point six four acres. And the description is there and, uh, address near three thousand north and Bulldog Road, Cedar City, Utah.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to agenda item number four. Uh, public hearing discussion and possible approval of proposed zone change from residential five acre, R five to commercial for approximately five point six two acres located within the legal description provided. Uh, this is addressed near, uh, thirty-two eighty north, Old ninety-one.
The property as described is just in between Enik and Cedar City. In the unincorporated area, you can see the gray, uh, smoked areas are Enik to the north and Cedar City to the south. Falls within kind of in between there. It's a, is a ten acre or a fifteen acre parcel that currently, um, exists all as R five. Their interest is to just rezone five acres that is the strip where the star is that runs along frontage of Old Highway ninety-one. It's not our normal protocol to zone a portion of a property without r- requiring subdivision of that so that we follow boundary lines. Uh, I know that many jurisdictions have done that over the years and they just say, okay, we're going to go back three hundred feet and go all along the road, you know, um, and, and that just cuts properties and leaves little pieces. And we've tried to avoid doing that for a number of years. And so in this case, we have, uh, the Planning Commission recommended approval to only be done with the submittal of a minor subdivision so that that parcel could be created. Uh, and that was their intent. They want to be able to do that and have proposed that and been working with Platt and Platt Engineering on a minor subdivision to be able to create that parcel. And so, uh, the proposal is that the parcel just be, you can see it's R five now. But this is Enik's, uh, master plan. You can see where the star is just to the side. They've master planned for commercial along the Old Highway ninety-one, even splitting that lot, which is the portion that we're looking at rezoning. And so the entire parcel, um, has good transportation all around it. Uh, on the north sides, uh, we've got a seventy-five foot, or a sixty-six foot right away. And, um, Old Minersville Highway running up, uh, is a hundred foot right away with Old High, Highway ninety-one. So it's good, has good circulation all around it. Uh, this is the hatched area that would be proposed for rezone. And this is the zone map that has a legal description for just the five point six four acres, six two, five point six two acres. And that's what we have an application on for the subdivision to create a minor subdivision that would provide for that lot being an entire lot so that they could be rezoned that way. Uh, there are, there is a well on the property currently that can serve water for the commercial development. Uh, it's not a public water system, but it can provide again for the, for the small projects that it can, can do until such times it needs a larger, more public process, it wouldn't need a public water system. And, and they have, uh, sewer in the area that they could tie into as well as there are some septics in some of that area. But there are people on sewer there and their property is within three hundred feet of an existing sewer line. So they could tie on to sewer for development. Any questions for public hearing?
Like you mentioned, that, that can be problematic. I can think of a few examples historically along like Highway one thirty or out here on Holyoke Lane that.
Related to water?
As, no, as, as, as you have zoning.
Oh, zoning.
You have annexations later. Yeah. And so, uh, I mean, the only worry I have is, is, is there a possibility of putting the cart before the horse with the zoning before the minor lot? Or are you not too worried about that?
Well.
Or maybe play out worst case scenario.
We did the approval of the Planning Commission and the recommendation here is to do the approval for the zone change contingent upon the minor subdivision.
Okay.
So that it is taken care of and it doesn't hold anybody up and we can still get it done.
Public hearing.
Chair declares the public hearing open on agenda item number four. Seeing no comment, public hearing will be closed and turn the time back over to Mr. Erickson.
Uh, the criteria again for rezoning, as we've evaluated, uh, they can take care of all of the accommodations, drainage, water, sewer, services, everything is available on that site. Um, and again, the, the Planning Commission recommendation was to approve contingent upon the minor subdivision to create the lot so that we have that parcel only on the parcel that, uh, or the zone change only on the parcel of the five point six two acres. So that's the recommendation.
All right. For a motion.
I'll move for approval of the proposed zone change from residential five acres, R five, to commercial C for approximately five point six two acres located within the description in the agenda. And this is, uh, near thirty-two eighty north, Meadowlark Lane and Old Highway ninety-one, Cedar City.
And adding contingent upon the minor subdivision?
And yes, and contingent upon the minor subdivision.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Uh, moving forward to agenda item number six. Public hearing discussion and possible approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four.
I think you skipped ahead.
Did I? Oh, I ch- I checked off number five instead of number four. That's why I pan, yeah. I'm like, okay. Sorry. Uh, agenda item number five, gotta uncheck it so it doesn't confuse me. Uh, public hearing discussion and possible approval of proposed zone change from residential five acres to residential one half acre, R one half, for approximately nineteen point five four acres located within the legal description as provided and addressed near thirty-five seventy north, twenty-three hundred west, Cedar City.
Thank you. This is a, a similar situation in which the proposal is to rezone a portion of a lot or a, a, a parcel that is all currently zoned R five. The proposal is to zone just the north nineteen acres. Oops, let's see. The north nineteen acres of that field, uh, that is just immediately south of the estates at Sunrise Ranch. So it's a nineteen, uh, point, as you mentioned, nineteen point five four acre piece that is part of a larger parcel. And so, um, they want to, again, it, it's hard, which comes first. In order to create the, the lots, they have to have it rezoned. But they don't want to go through a subdivision to create one parcel, uh, when their intention is to create eighteen parcels. They can't create those one acre lots until they rezone it to R one half. So again, this was done contingent upon the subdivision. And we do have an application in. Uh, it will be on the May Planning Commission agenda for the subdivision, which is Sunrise Ranch, uh, excuse me, Estates at Sunrise Ranch Phase Two, which would be the same type of development as what is the two roads kind of looping around to the north of that with one acre parcels. Uh, they're, they're going to, uh, with R one half because that's what it's adjacent to. It's not adjacent to any R one, so they don't qualify to be zoned R one. Uh, and this allows them also to have just a little bit narrower frontage on the R one lots than what, uh, excuse me, the R one half lots than what the R one lots have, which was the case with the subdivision just above it in the Estates at Sunrise Ranch Phase One. A good transportation in the area. Uh, we have, you know, further development. You can see the green on the bottom there. That's actually three thousand. Uh, and the future intention is for the master plan to come up and connect three thousand with thirty-two hundred north as it goes west across the valley. And then the property, the line to the north is four thousand north, which would go also across the valley fairly much, uh, for the master planned road. So with existing roads and future planned roads, we have good transportation corridors in the area as well. And, uh, twenty-three, or twenty-three hundred west itself is a seventy-five foot master planned road. And so this subdivision, the subdivision to the north provided the additional width as the subdivision occurred to give us the seventy-five foot right away. And then we would expect the same here and it's proposed on the plat. Currently for the phase two, and so we would get the seventy-five foot right away at that time. And, um, the sewer can be accommodated through a line that was run, uh, in the development last time. The, the, let's see, I guess, the, the line for this phase two, phase one sewer came out this end and ran down to four thousand and back into twenty-three hundred. And they have capacity to have this because the property drains from east to west. They can drain the sewer this way, get into that same line and, uh, gravity flow that sewer. Um, and those provisions were made. It's on the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District to provide water. And so all of the services are available there and, uh, was done, uh, recommendation. There were no, no concerns until we got to the public hearing, the Planning Commission, and then the one neighbor to the north was at the Planning Commission meeting and, and just simply asked whether, what the proposal was. We hadn't seen it at Planning Commission because this was on the March, uh, sixth agenda or March seventh, uh, for Planning Commission. And so since that time, we have the application for the subdivision and we can show that their one acre lots the same as what was to the north. And that was the concern that came out of the Planning Commission. They just wanted to know what kind of development that was going to be. But outside of that, we haven't had any other comments.
What about flood, uh, storm drain?
Yeah, storm drain can still be accommodated the same way, uh, as phase one was. It can drain out to the west and then to the north through Walker Ditch. And, uh, Rich is working on making sure that that can be accommodated.
So there's been some ditches that have been filled in. Is Walker Ditch one of those that, one leg of that was filled?
No, this will go in the right away until it can get over to the Walker Ditch. And so it can go in the right, in the right away for the road, the north-south road right there to handle the drainage.
All right.
And we'll look at that closer with the Rich and the engineers as we go through the subdivision.
It's helpful that they're one acre lots also, right?
Yeah, they, they can handle a lot of the drainage on site, but it would just be the roads primarily that would be draining.
Draining.
And would that be borrow pits or like curb and gutter?
That's better for, that's better all around, isn't it? The borrow pits, I mean, it just absorbs better.
Yeah, we're really, you know, okay with the R one, R one half zone does require curb gutter and sidewalk, but because with one acre lots, we've, in phase one, we did a variation on the subdivision to allow, uh, borrow ditches and drainage on site as much as possible because then we're not collecting all that water out of the subdivision and trying to take it somewhere and flood somebody else. So with the one acre lots, we can do that and we don't worry about that with, uh, even though it's R one half, we can make that accommodation by having one acre lots and draining them on site.
That's good.
All right. Chair declares the public hearing. Chair declares the public hearing open on agenda item number five.
Hello, Carol Barker. Um, I live out in this area and I've seen the growth of all these subdivisions out there. And you guys recently rezoned a part of Peak View Estates for fifty four homes. The one thing that hasn't changed is the size of the roads. Um, the other thing is the water. You talk about how we're taking out more water than is going in the ground. And I know Iron County is growing, I get it, but when do you guys pump the brakes on the growth for a little bit? It's just my concern is it's water, 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 but I know, I mean, you can have a water right from seventeen forty four, but if it's not in the ground, if we're, if, if the ground's empty, water right's not going to do you any good, so.
Legally, we can't stop the growth.
I understand that, but you can pump the brakes, right?
Well, for six months.
Six months.
And then it makes it worse after you lighten, after you let it go after that, it's worse.
Then it goes crazy.
So, so a lot of those fields you see, those, uh, that farmer's farm that for, he's eight years old.
Yeah.
His kids don't want to farm it.
Right, I get that.
He's got old water, he's got old, he's got the land and it's not our place to tell him they can't develop it.
Right, I get that, I get that. And then you, you mentioned about the food thing with, we're losing fields because the kids don't want to farm. I understand it, it's like, it's just crazy. And, and I know that I can't do anything about it, but it's like, man, can we just pump the brakes for a little bit and figure out something, so?
Yeah, we would love that too, but legally, we really can't.
But, but you know, what I don't see addressed is the roads, mid-valley, twenty, uh, twenty three hundred west is pretty narrow. Um, the, the sewer system, is that going to be upgraded to handle all these new homes? You talked about BZI wanting to run into, into the sewer system. There's just a lot of growth and-
That's way away from this area.
I, it is way, way away from this area and I know they're gonna, they're gonna run, what, that thirty inch line all the way across the valley? So it's just, it's overwhelming, the growth and it's just like, I would love to see this like all laid out. I'm a planner, I'm a, I'm a note taker, I'm a list maker and it's just like, oh, let's just slow down a little bit, it's getting crazy.
The county has done a lot of planning, you know, transportation and, and different things too.
And I appreciate that and I just, it just seems like things are going at warp speed and there, there can be those unintended consequences of this growth that we need to look into the future and be aware of, so just thank you.
Thank you. Any other, come on up ma'am.
State your name?
Lily Levitz. And I live off of twenty five hundred or on twenty five hundred west. And I am on a well. And if they start bringing in all those apartments and everything else, and our roads out there are not the best, and you go downtown, every day you see a wreck on Main Street. It's because of all this building, they have no place. Where are they gonna put them? Okay, they're building houses that are taking up all the farmlands. I know that they're got a right to sell them, but they should be sold to somebody that wants to do what is best for the community. And I'm, I'm not on the water conservancy, even though I'm paying for it, I'm not on it. I have water rights and I have my own well. And I don't think it's right because that, those guys, when they would water those hay fields, would help our well and the other people that have wells out there. And I don't think it's right. And I don't want two-story buildings popping up in front of my house so I can't see the view that I bought, uh, my house to see twenty years ago. So, and I don't think anybody else out there wants that either.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And again, i- if it's, i- if it's legal, I, I mean, we, we are fairly bound by the rule of law. We, I, I would love to see more agriculture and everything else, but if it falls within the parameters of the law, there's not a whole lot that we can do.
That's our private property rights and, and, you know, I, it does make you feel bad, like I said in my report, you know?
We're growing out of our water. And what, what is going to happen to my well when, when you, when we use, these people use up all of the water that's around, what are we going to do for water?
Yeah.
Any of us?
It all, it all comes-
Any of us.
All comes down to water rights and personal property.
If there's no water, to, what good is your water rights?
They're, they're gonna start taking the water away if they aren't good water rights. I mean, that's, that's the groundwater management plan, so.
So they're gonna take my water rights?
I don't know, what, what is your date on your water? Do you know?
I don't, well, I bought it, we bought it in two thousand four and we have four acre foot of water. We have pasture in the back and we have a, a house, one house on our, our property and trees. We have a lot of trees around our house.
Yeah. But you need to look at what your date is on your water, not the year you bought it, but the date on, though it was issued, the priority date, be a good thing to, for you to look at. You can go to the, uh, state engineer, the water, uh, state engineer, it's on Main Street, just off of Main Street there, and ask them and they can tell you what your priority date is. Would be a good idea for you to know that.
Well, our house was bought in, um, or built in ninety four, ninety five.
So if you have a water right of nineteen thirty four, you, it will never go away? Anything newer than that may. So you may want to look at that.
I, I don't understand. If you've paid for water rights, how do they take them away if you're using the water?
Yeah, Paul, do you want to?
So water rights, water rights were issued by priority dates. So there's some eighteen, I saw the other day, there was some eighteen fifty six water for sale and it goes all the way up to nineteen, what is, what is the newest water right? Sixty four or something? Tyler, do you know? What's the newest water right?
Sixty four or sixty five?
Yeah, sixty four or five. And so the best way to explain it is, um, if you have a fifty-five gallon drum full of holes all the way around it, all the way to the top, um, and that barrel's full of water and, and, and each hole represents a water right. And if the water's clear to the top of the barrel and there's water coming out of the holes, everybody's good. But if that water ever drops below a hole in the barrel, there's no water coming out anymore. It doesn't mean you don't have that water right, it just means you don't get any water. And, and so you have to have, and, and that, and that barrel, the, there's a line where the holes are at nineteen thirty four priority date and, and, and you're guaranteed always to have water at that date because that's the old water. And that's the only way it was fair for the state to, um, issue waters by priority date. And so you just need to check and see what your, if you've got a newer prior date, you might know, need to go out on the market and buy an older water right. And so I would, like Marilyn said, I would check that out.
Was that well drilled for that home? Do you know? It was. So it, it may be-
It was drilled for that home and the home across, uh, thirty four hundred.
So you've got two homes on that well?
Yes, there's two homes on that well.
Yeah. But it's something that you should probably find out about to see what your water priority date is. It probably would be helpful for you.
I had a, I had a rental home I bought years ago out in the valley and it had a newer water right and to be safe, I went out and bought an older water right years ago and, 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 and I actually transferred that to the Water Conservancy District and tied into their system, but I had to come to the table with a, with an older water right. So. And that's not our law, that's the state of Utah. That's, they regulate the water.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda item number five?
Tyler Melling, Velocity Development. We're a partner in this project, uh, so just to reiterate some of what Mr. Erickson covered, uh, yes, these are one acre lots despite the R half zoning. These are one acre lots, they're single-family homes. The covenants are going to be very similar to Estates at Summer, Sunrise Ranch, just to the north. Uh, we've had a couple little issues in the past that will be remedied in, in the new covenants for this phase. Um, as well, the, when, when Estates at Sunrise Ranch Phase One was done, the water district didn't have very good incentives, uh, for conservation with new development. Those have since been added and we will be taking those steps. So right now, uh, in this nineteen-ish acre parcel, that's eighty acre feet of water rights coming out of the ground and irrigating that area. Uh, we're planning for this development to use, uh, give or take about ten acre feet. Um, so we're cutting the draw on the water table in that immediate area, uh, by a significant amount. Um, uh, as well, that, you know, that is a huge risk to the infrastructure with one acre lots is, is if you transfer a lot of water rights, people are entitled to irrigate a lot of water unless the developer does something about it at the development phase. And that is what we're doing. Well, there will be covenants and, and as well, they will be billed differently at the meter than other customers, uh, so that, uh, their water use, uh, will be greatly incentivized to not exceed the amount of water that is transferred to the district. Uh, so Water District, Cedar City, uh, Enoch City, uh, most of the, uh, municipalities and water systems in the area over the last few years since the groundwater management plan was published have made great strides on conservation, especially at the development phase and making sure developers are bringing that old water to the table and reducing the draw in the aquifer, um, with what they're replacing the land with. So, uh, we are doing our part on that aspect and, and greatly reducing that. Um, and then, you know, with that hat, hat off and just as a citizen who has children, I am glad that you are allowing, uh, the building of, uh, homes because my kids can't possibly afford to bid against people who move from out of town. Um, so if the supply were to stop, uh, all the kids, the next generation would have to move away and then you don't really have a town worth saving. So, uh, I'm, I'm glad you're allowed to, uh, you're, you're allowing us to keep our culture here, keep our kids here and provide options for them. Thank you.
Tyler, just a question. Remind me, um, so with the water district, isn't it normal a point four, four or five acre foot for a house? And if, and if you do the conservation, the zero escaping and things, doesn't, doesn't it go down to like point three five?
Uh, so historically, it's been a full acre foot per connection.
Full acre on an acre.
Um, and, and some users go far above that, uh, because the waste was so subsidized and especially for peak demand, uh, where that impacts the number of wells and the number of water tanks and everything else that can cause a big problem, uh, with these new systems. You can get as low as point three five or so. Uh, we won't go that low with these, um, lots because there will be some irrigation, uh, but we, we're, we're still exploring that, but we are probably going to be in the point five range with these lots, which is enough for normal, uh, household use plus about three thousand square feet of turf grass is what we're looking at. So we, we, we may reduce that even more just to provide some cushion, but, uh, um, anyway, that's kind of what we're looking at.
Good.
Okay. Any other comment on agenda item number five? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Turn the time back over to Mr. Erickson.
Again, the criteria, a lot of the things that we've discussed in our discussion related to drainage and water and sewer, all those things, considerations. Again, this was, um, done with the, uh, recommendation for the, by the planning commission that an application be processed for the subdivision and that has been done. We'll have that on the May, uh, planning commission agenda for consideration and so we feel good about moving forward with that. Unless there are any other questions?
No questions.
Motion?
Yep.
I would move for approval of the proposed zone change from residential five acre, R five, to residential half acre, R one half, for approximately nineteen point five four acres at, uh, at the address near thirty five seventy north and twenty three hundred west, Cedar City, in the description there in the agenda.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now moving on to agenda item number six. Public hearing discussion and possible approval of ordinance twenty twenty four dash two, proposed county land use code amendments modifying section seventeen point one six point zero three zero in the table of uses, seventeen point one six point zero four zero, table of site development standards and seventeen point two zero point zero one zero, use definitions.
This ordinance came, uh, as a result of questions and concerns from a particular development and related to setbacks in the light industrial zone as well as some of the other changes that we've been considering, uh, with applications that we've had for kennels and development on properties that are smaller than what the zoning is in the, in the twenty acre, uh, zone classifications. That would be R, uh, RA one half, R, excuse me, RA twenty, A twenty and RR twenty that we have twenty acre, um, the, the way the court ordinance previously read, uh, years, for many years, is that you had to have at least ten acres in the A twenty zone to be able to do anything on that property except a house. Um, and then we changed it a few years ago to have minimum of five acres before you could do anything. And any of those other uses that were in the twenty acre zones would require a conditional use permit. Since then, we've looked at several projects that fall just below the five acre and, uh, the type of building that they want to put on them, they could do in a one, a one acre area. And so, uh, we felt like that to provide more opportunities for people to do things on their property besides just have a house in the A twenty zone, in the twenty acre zones, which is where a lot of our opportunity is for trying to start up businesses and things that they can do as, as expanded home occupations and small businesses, contractor office shop, things that they can kind of start on a smaller level and then grow those until it outgrows the property and the location. And then they move into a light industrial zone or to an industrial zone or to a commercial zone. Uh, to provide for more of those opportunities, we felt that it was appropriate that we make a change in the ordinance that simply evaluates the project on a case-by-case basis for the acreage that it has and remove the minimum five acre, uh, provision. Uh, so that's really what happens in, um, in, in the section of the table of uses, site development standard on the notes. And I'll go through each of the four changes that we want to make in this proposed ordinance because we are now using that as kind of a cleanup ordinance. We're saying, here are several other problems that we've had in these sections of code that would be nice to clean up and address while we're at it. And that's where these come from. So the, the first one there on the table of uses is the kennel. We had an application for a kennel permit in the A twenty zone, but it, it was on five point nine four acres or something like that. But as we looked at it, it was immediately adjacent on the north and the west to BLM by a long, a lot of BLM, uh, no neighbors. Their daughter lived to the east and they were along Highway fifty six on the south, uh, which was, put them a long ways from neighbors on that south end. And their property and their house and their project was clear up in the northwest corner of the property against BLM. And our ordinance said you can have a kennel unless you had at least twenty acres. And so we had the provision, uh, that we wanted to change there and it's, and looking at the kennel, so, you know, this is as good a place for a kennel as any. If we're going to ever have one, there's really not any better place. And it was all an indoor facility. There was no outdoor kennels. And so it made it even that more, you know, ask ourselves, does this ordinance really fit in these kind of cases? That's why their ordinance is being proposed for change is to accommodate those kinds of developments. And we thought maybe, uh, that we would take a look at the kennels and break it out into two categories similar to what we have in our ordinance for veterinary clinics. We had veterinary clinics allowed in some zones if they had outdoor holding facilities and in other zones, if they had indoor holding facilities and no outdoor holding facilities, then it could go in, in zones that may have houses closer. And so we thought maybe that's a good way to approach the kennels is that we could have, uh, we could allow them in more places that, that if they have indoor holding facilities than if they don't have indoor holding facilities and only have outdoor holding facilities. So, so that's the first section deals with kennels. The second section I, I mentioned dealt with the minimum of, of the five acres and setbacks. The third section is just in the, in that code section defining kennels, uh, and the, with outdoor holding facilities. So it kind of ties the item above in table of uses, number one. So it kind of ties the item above and Table of Uses, number one. And then the fourth provision or area of code change is that we often run into a concern when we have a guest house on a property that has another access or they want to have another access. The ordinance requires that a guest house share the same access as the primary dwelling to the county right of way. And on twenty-acre parcels and on some of these areas where they're on a corner lot, they already had another exit off the other side that was going into the garage. And now they're converting that to a guest house. And now we're saying you can't use that entrance anymore because it's a second access and you have to use the primary access. And yet it really didn't hurt anybody. There's really no, the code was put in that way because we wanted to truly make it look and appear and act as a guest house, not as a separate property so that they didn't think in the future they'd divide that off. And we're developing the ability for accessory dwelling units and guest houses to try to accommodate for more affordable housing opportunities and to maximize our infrastructure that's already there. And it made a lot of sense, but the concept is still holds. So what we're proposing in this case is to still say that it can only have one access unless approved by the county engineer. And we're meeting Thursday as staff to review what the criteria that the county engineer would look at in evaluating that. You know, he'd be looking at an encroachment permit, you know, what the location is, how close the driveway is to the corner, what kind of road it is. Is it a collector or a major arterial or a small neighborhood street? You know, what the safety issues are, what site distances are, drainage concerns, how the property is addressed, all those kinds of things that relate to why we said it should be a single access. We can address and look at all of those things and then he can make a determination and add that second access if it doesn't create any kind of problem. So that's the provision that we're accommodating in that. So back to the kennels. This is the Table of Uses and we're simply creating two types of kennels, one with outdoor holding facilities. And this is where the ordinance existed previously when it just said kennel. And so the only zone change or only area is in the industrial zone where we're saying if it has outdoor holding facilities, it could be an administrative land use rather than a permitted use because we can review it if it has only outdoor holding facilities. If it has only indoor holding facilities, then that's the Knute definition in the category that we've added. And you can see where it's allowed, where it's an administrative land use permit and where it's a permitted use. Oh, in the industrial zone, we said if it only has indoor, it could be a permitted use. And administrative in A20, conditional use in RA20 where you can see previously that they could have up to eight dogs in the RA20 zone with a conditional use permit, but no more than that. Now we're saying if they have indoor holding facilities, they could have more dogs than that. And we would review that on a case-by-case basis with all conditional use permits. We stipulate how many animals can be held on site, how they take care of the cleanup, the feces, and how, you know, all aspects of the operations of the kennel. And so we felt like that it was appropriate to allow those and then make it an administrative land use for any number in the, if they had indoor holding facilities in the A20 zone. So as you can see by the definitions there, we're just trying to describe what an outdoor holding facility kennel is and what a kennel with indoor, only indoor holding facilities. And we did have one concern about that at the Planning Commission Public Hearing. There was a gentleman who lives in an area where there's already a kennel in the RA20 zone that's not a legal kennel. And we've been working with the applicant to try to fix that. This will allow them now with an indoor holding facility to have that kennel there. He expressed some concerns about noise and dogs when they're out playing in the yard and not in the indoor holding facility, what kind of concern that could be. But Planning Commission believed that this was a good approach and the way that we should move forward. This is the Table of Uses that describes some of the changes that we're making. The request was in the light industrial zone to go from thirty to twenty-five feet for a front or for a rear yard setback so that it was the same as the front yard and then have the side setbacks be twenty feet instead of twenty-five feet. Working with the building code and the building department, determining what kind of buildings could be built as you move closer to the property, they didn't feel like that was a problem. So it is really more commensurate with some of the municipalities that we're immediately adjacent to. They even have smaller setbacks than that and we didn't feel that it would be detrimental and it could help in this case. We also looked at trying to make it a little more uniform in the R2 zone where you have a front and rear setback that are different. We don't have that in many of the other zones. So we're just making that thirty instead of forty. And then having a smaller reduced setback in R5 from sixty to forty-five because sixty is the same setback in the twenty-acre zones and we didn't feel that it was necessary to quite go back that far. And it just allows them to get a little more utilization of the five, in the five-acre lots. So that's the provision of the table, on the Table of Site Development Standards. And this is just the specific language. You've had a copy of the ordinance to look at. I don't know if you have any questions about that, but it just eliminates that minimum of five acres and allows it to be anything that can be accommodated in the twenty-acre zoning with a conditional use permit for uses other than just residential. So it kind of opens more opportunities for that. And then it takes out the twenty-acre minimum requirement on the very bottom line there for a kennel in any of the zones. And then we accommodated for that in the, specifically, you know, by having indoor and outdoor holding facilities. And then the last one here is just the language that we added to the, to the guest house ordinance that required a same shared access as the primary dwelling unless an alternative access is authorized by the Iron County Engineer. So those are the changes. Just ran through quickly unless you have any specific questions, we can have a public hearing.
I appreciate you giving yourself a little bit of leeway because each individual project is so much different. That way, you know, you can look at it case to case. And I think that's always a good thing.
All right, declare the public hearing open on Agenda Item Number Six. Seeing no comment, close the public hearing. Go back for finish up.
Rich.
On this multiple access, it becomes an enforcement issue too. I was just driving through several subdivisions this last week and I saw homes, in fact, there's one home that has three accesses on the lot where they've made three curb cuts. And it's a, it's literally less than an acre lot. And so I'm thinking, when I drive around and things, see things like that, I'm going, you know, really, they haven't got the encroachment permits that they've asked, that they should have asked for. But is it really a hindrance? Because they're in a planned development. They've got curb and gutter. A lot of times I worry about a second access because I want to be able to have a discussion about drainage, about keeping the borrow ditch open, things like that. And then I, then I looked in the same neighborhood and they have a single curb cut. It's the whole front of their yard. The whole, whole front yard is a curb cut. And so where do you say, well, you have to have, you know, a second access when it's forty, in this case, almost sixty feet of curb cut. Do we say, but you can't have more than twenty-five feet of curb cut? You know, and so it becomes a real challenge. And I think particularly in a subdivision that has curb and gutter, it's a non-issue because they already have taken care of their drainage. They're in a lower speed limit. They're closer homes. There isn't a safety issue, line of sites, things like that. And so I really like the suggestion from the building department that we make it a case-by-case county engineer decision. Not because I want to make the decision, but because it opens people up. And then I'm not worried as I drive around thinking in my mind, I know they don't have an encroachment permit, they're in violation of our ordinance. So it kind of backward permits all those things that go through my mind when I'm driving around.
Okay, I think we're ready for action unless you have any questions.
No question.
I'll move to approve the ordinance 2024-2, The Proposed County Land Use Code Amendments, Modifying Section seventeen point one six point zero three zero, Table of Uses, seventeen point one six point zero four zero, Table of Site Development Standards, and seventeen point two zero point zero one zero, Use Definitions.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. We handled public comments at the beginning of the meeting to accommodate some folks that were there. So we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight. Discussion and possible approval of a single event local consent permit for an alcohol garden at Favella's Ranch, sixty-three fifty-three north, sixteen hundred west in Burl on April twentieth, twenty twenty-four from noon to four P.M. Requested by Rigoberto Favella. Come on up.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, my name is Rigoberto Favella and I'm trying to acquire the, the single event consent for the alcohol garden.
What is your event?
It's a horse race event on April twentieth. Yes.
Okay. How many folks do you plan on having there? Give us a little, sell your event. Get a little free advertising for your event.
Okay, yeah, we're trying to see if we can bring at least two hundred people in there. And yeah, it's been a little challenging, but we're trying to see if we could do our grand opening this twentieth. And that's why I'm trying to see if I can get the alcohol permit.
How many horses?
At least nine, yeah, at least nine to ten races.
Oh, wow.
So.
Is it just a dirt track?
Ah, yes. Uh huh, yeah.
Interesting.
Pretty much it's like teams, you know? And each of the horses have their own followers and yeah, that's what we're trying to acquire.
Interesting.
Cool.
Yes.
And is the, oh, is the area for the beer garden, is it a secure area? Is there, you know, plans to check for, making sure the people are of age?
Yes, I actually.
So he submitted a sketch here.
Yeah, and I took some.
Hard to see on the picture.
I've been doing my work on, you know, for the certificates.
Oh, good.
And serving and so I could be, yeah, on the right page, not to sell liquor to many minors. And I'm working on the garden right now with a secure. I got, I'm putting four-by-four posts around the whole garden that I can keep the people in the area.
Great.
Good, good.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll enterate a motion.
Okay, I will move for approval of a single event, local consent permit for an alcohol garden at Favio's Ranch, sixty-three fifty-three north, sixteen hundred west, Burl, Utah. And it will be April twentieth from noon to four o'clock.
Yes.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We approve. Do you have?
Signature?
So do I, I'll sign this and then?
Take it downstairs and get a coffee.
Yeah, so do you know where the clerk's office is downstairs?
I.
It's, I'm like, I'm pointing at it right now. It's here on the southeast corner of the building. But if you just go downstairs and the south end and you want to make sure you let them, give that folder to them and they'll give you your permit back, okay?
Okay, so we got permission for one event a month. So every time I acquire a permit, do I have to go through a meeting like this or?
So there are two different ways to approach it. So this is a single event only, but there is a more permanent one.
Okay.
And that is through the DABC, the Division of Alcohol Beverage.
So you need to apply?
Through the state of Utah. And anyway, they are your, if you're going to be more permanent, then you don't necessarily want to try and have to do this every single time.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but that's, that's not, you'll have a single one, one more time that would come here. But yeah, you know, if you're going to do them that often, you may not want to have to pursue a single event permit for approval every time.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
And it's nice to see you in person. We talked on the phone several times.
Good luck with your event. That's great.
Thank you.
All right, Agenda Item Number Nine. Discussion and possible approval of a contract for commercial landscaping services for the following properties, Peril and Courthouse, Iron County Fairgrounds, Visitor Center, and Justice Court. Welcome, Thane.
Welcome, Thane Hainsworth, Iron County building. Longtime listener, first time speaker, so bear with me.
Thanks for calling in today.
And don't be nervous. Come on, babe.
Thane's been waiting for quite a while to get his chance to stand up.
So we put the landscape back to bed, had seven contractors bid on it. We've narrowed it down to one contractor to take care of all the facilities. And that would be everything exterior. We've thrown all the numbers around, did our due diligence, you know, checked on them, you know? But as far as that goes, I've got a contract I'd like to have signed so we can proceed and move forward.
So it's substantially lower than what was before?
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
Do you know what the total, what the total contract cost?
You know, I didn't break that down. I probably should have. My other co-part Terry's out of town, so he had all those figures in his head.
I guess we can just say everything exterior.
Yeah, I was just curious. Okay, well.
Do you know whether that second column is?
If we add that second column up, is that it? Is that accurate?
Approximately.
Do you know whether that's maybe true? So there's the, you've got like the monthly, the per visit cost and then the?
Yeah, if you add it up, this column.
Kind of a, looks maybe like a total, but I'm not sure if you just, if it's okay to, if it works to add that up or?
So the second column's twenty-five thousand four sixty-four. Is that, is that the number we're?
Does ring a bell to you?
Is that the number we're looking at total?
I didn't throw my numbers around. I had Terry doing that, but.
We can put that in the motion.
Yeah, that's.
As long as I added that right.
I got twenty-five five sixty-four.
Did you? Thirty-three oh four.
Carry the one.
Twenty-five five sixty-four?
Twenty-five five sixty-four.
Yeah. Let's second try, I got it right. Okay.
All right.
You ready?
Yep.
I'll move to approve the contractor for the commercial landscaping services for the following properties, Peril and Courthouse, Iron County Fairgrounds, Visitor Center, and Justice Court. And that will be by everything exterior for a total of twenty-five thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You, thanks, Thane.
Thanks, Thane. Good job.
Thank you. Thane was here cleaning some of the outside stuff yesterday, so we appreciate him.
You're what?
About our new landscape. Yes. I spend a fair amount of time pulling weeds, so.
Yeah, so hopefully they'll do a good job.
All right. Agenda Item Number Ten. Discussion and possible approval of a conduit issuance policy and appurtenant documents and fees presented by Sam Woodall.
Are you okay with that, Sam?
Yes. I didn't get your. As you're well aware, Utah code allows for.
As you're well aware, Utah Code allows for the issuance of bonds under the Industrial Facilities and Development Act. And so pursuant to that law, it allows the governing body to specify the terms by which they issue a bond. And so we've been working with Marcus Keller, our bond counsel, to develop a policy. This has become more necessary because, as you're aware, this isn't the first time the county's been approached about issuing a bond on behalf of a nonprofit. And so we deemed it appropriate to develop a policy so that going forward, those parameters are clear. We have for your consideration, and I believe you've each reviewed, the policy, which is fairly broad, the information required, the fees that would be considered, and then as well as an attachment A., which is an application of sorts. And that's much more in-depth. It provides a wealth of information from the history of the project, the people who will be involved, the financing of the entity that's seeking a bond, and also allows you to consider its uses and whether or not that would be in the best interests of the public. So again, these are good policies. They're fairly broad, but again, give some structure and also guidance to those who may be seeking to request bonds from Iron County going forward. What questions do you have?
I've read through them.
Yeah, I thought it was good to have some clarity, you know?
Should we give just a little bit of an overview of the policy, Sam?
I think if you could hit those headings, that'll be appropriate.
Okay, so this, well, first of all, plagiarism is alive and well in municipal government. And so much of this policy came from Salt Lake County and a few other counties. We appreciate Marcus Keller, our municipal advisor, for kind of putting this together for us. And there weren't a lot of edits after, after his initial draft. And we did put this out on the public notice website. Basically, it requires that they be a nonprofit. It requires that they submit the application, and then there's kind of a form that we'll go through on that. And that there's kind of an open-ended, you know, allowance of asking for additional information. That there will be a fee imposed to evaluate a proposal. One of the things that we have found, as we've done this a few times, is that there's a fairly tremendous administrative overburden. And so to try and compensate for some of that. And then there's an application fee in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars, and an issuance fee for ten thousand. And that, again, is to recruit some of the administrative efforts that have to happen. And then there's an annual maintenance fee of one thousand dollars per year. Yeah, so here are, this is kind of the application. This is the checklist. So you have to say what you're doing and what the project is, what you're asking the county to do. What is the public purpose of the project and how it will benefit the public? Why the county would be involved in such a project? It's also on that subsection F. there to describe the proposed terms of the debt issuance, including the length of issue repayment structure and creditworthiness of the borrower. Kind of define the county involvement. Give a history of the project, where it came from, what are the, you know, the origins, how much public awareness there is of it, et cetera. Kind of clarity on the business itself, the nonprofit itself, that is, and what kind of management requirements there will be. A breakdown of the finances and a description of the property. And that way, you know, this is, this kind of standardizes the application process. Anything to add to that, Sam? Way too far. I forgot how big that document was. Yeah, so there's that.
Is there, so, I guess my only concern, so, you know, and just some background, this, this document is a result, resulting in application request by the Dixie Nan Levitt Foundation, Family Foundation. I guess this has been, this has been an item that's been in the works really since end of last year. Then it's come to commission the last month or so. I guess I don't have, I think, I think having things in writing and having something like this is a good thing. I guess my only concern is that we're changing the rules to the game in the middle of the game. You know, we're already in the middle of an application process, and then, you know, this is something that, that comes up in the middle. I mean, I really don't know how to put it any more simple than just changing the rules to the game in the middle of the game. I guess that's my only concern with it.
So my concern, one of the concerns is, well, we've done this before. Let's just do it again. And it seemed like it really wasn't exactly like it was before. There was, the first one that was done was leased back to the college, which, you know, they really needed it at that time. And I believe that, that it was really a needed thing for the college. The second one wasn't. It was probably more like this one that we're, that we're looking at today. We didn't, we wasn't able to look at it, so it wasn't really in the middle of it. I mean, I understand your concerns, but, Mike, but, you know, we really, Paul and I hadn't voted on one before. Mike had gone through, did you go through both of them?
No, just the first one. Just the last one.
Last one, yeah. Where, you know, I'm not sure we really understood it that much. And delving down into it more, some of the things that have come to light, especially with other people, you know, other businesses doing these same type projects and them getting a benefit from, from doing it, which, you know, I guess others can do it. But this just clarifies it a little more. Having this policy in place, I think, is a good thing besides having to do the extra work on, on it with the reporting and that type of thing. But we just, we, I didn't really understand it fully. And in delving into it, I, I do more now, so.
So, and this isn't, this isn't a question about, if I can clarify, John, this isn't a question about approving the project today. This is just simply the policy.
Right, simply the policy.
Well, I, and again, I mean, my, my concern is that we're changing the rules in the middle of the game. I, and going through this policy, I don't necessarily see where it would categorically exclude anyone from, from applying.
No.
But that's my, that's my concern.
I can tell you, from my perspective, I really like the idea of having a policy. This particular project has illustrated why that's a challenge, especially for someone like me who, you know, I put it on the agenda, and then we table it, and I think, oh, I shouldn't have put it on the agenda, or, you know, I want to, I want to make sure I do what the commission would like and that we've, we've properly, you know, vetted. But I actually think, I like the idea of a policy that helps the county as a whole, and the commissioners in particular, vet projects as they come in. You know, I know that there's been a lot said about this particular project, but I like the idea of some standardization. I like the idea, so often, folks like Nicole end up eating tons of administrative hours on, on some of these type things that there is no compensation for. And so we cause the taxpayers to kind of.
Take that.
Subsidize the effort additionally because, and so, so I like the idea of having some nominal fees and, and, well, I've got her. And, you know, for me, ten thousand is a lot of dollars, but, but really, it adds up fast as far as the administrative effort between, you know, the different offices required. So I like, I like that. I kind of like a standardized checklist, something that an applicant could, could, could go through and kind of pre-vet themselves. You know, this is, this is a form that we can make available when, when people do that. I like the idea that it also is necessary that they be, you know, five oh one C. three or similar organization as far as a charitable organization, not a for-profit organization. Because the only thing Iron County has done so far has been student housing. But this conduit bonding is used for a lot of other things in other places, especially more urban areas. But to provide, you know, more available funding for projects that might not otherwise be able to happen. And so from my perspective, and this is the thirty thousand foot, not necessarily specific to this project, but that I like the idea of having a policy in place. And I really like the vetting that Marcus has done for it and, and the fact that you all have looked at it, and I've looked at it, and Sam, and I think everyone feels comfortable, at least with what's worded there. I haven't heard different, anyway.
I do like the policy. I've read through it, and I like the questions and how it vets the project and how it's moving forward.
Tyler, have you got any comment? I mean, this is, directly affects your project. This was, this was birthed out of, out of your project request?
So I've had as much time as everyone else here to look at the policy. So as, as Mr. Woodall and Mr. Whitaker went through it, I took notes. From what I can tell, it looks like our policy would be able to, or our project would be able to at least pass the application phase. I will say that when it comes to paying of fees to help with this, there's no issues there. What, my concern is this. My concern is that we came through for the third time, and we met all the cities, or all the county's requirements. We, we played by the rules that we were told to, to play by. My concern is now we've, you know, we've tabled this. Now we got to go through an application process, and things are just being changed. I would ask that we can continue to move through based on the rules that we applied with. I don't know if there's really any sort of vesting argument that could be made here, but I think an attorney could at least dream up an argument. But our hope is that we can keep moving through. So I got a couple of questions. The first is when it comes to this application, is there a timeframe where it has to be submitted before it can come before the county commission?
There's not a timeframe, but it does have to be complete before it can be considered.
Okay, so, so we can stay on the agenda for next round? We just have to have a completed application in before then? Okay. Well, that's my concern. That's why I made phone calls to the county commission back in December. Time is of the essence. I think we've tried to do the best we can so both parties can feel comfortable in this. I will say, this five oh one C. three, I know there's a lot of, I'm hearing a lot of things that are not coming to me directly. So I'll, I'll base it on just things I've heard. Whether they're true or not, I don't know. Our five oh one C. three, DOLF, all profits that come into that company stay into the company and then are used for the next charitable project that we do. There's no paid employees. There's no paid board. There are no tax incentives that aren't available to anyone else in the community who wants to make a charitable donation to a five oh one C. three. The purpose of our charity is to provide housing for students. There has been no, from my perspective, not what I've had anyone confront me with, any negative things that have come about because of the last two projects. Our rents are the highest in the county. I, we're not underpricing anyone. This isn't a, we're not in that competitive market. We're in a market of providing housing to a university. The university requested this housing that we built, Travis Towers. So this was in line with the nature of the charitable foundation, and that's why we're moving this forward like we have in the past. Any questions for me?
How do you get paid?
I'm the president of Levitt Land and Investment, a separate entity.
Yeah.
So the Land and Investment donates your time to the, the foundation, then?
Today, yeah.
Yeah. What about, you said there's no paid employees, like no paid employees?
Correct.
Okay.
So we, Levitt Land and Investment deals with the development of property. We manage a farm in Loa. We have property rentals. We have an accounting center. DOLF is a separate charitable organization that deals with student housing and housing in general. We have a project in Mesquite that we're working through right now as well.
So when you have administrative burden, it's donated by one of those other organizations, essentially. Is that, is that fair to say?
Correct, so administrative burden like.
Like preparing documents.
Payroll for the sub who came in and did the HVA. Yes, that, that comes through our accounting center.
And the land development efforts as far as the expertise and all that comes from, is donated by the profitable arms of, of the Levitts?
So.
I mean, I guess I'm trying to restate that, but.
Sure, so let's, so in order to do this project, we have to have a general contractor. DOLF pays for a general contractor. So, I mean, they still pay to have the building built. It's not all voluntary, yeah. But the, the percentages have to be within required federal law in order to meet the standards, and we meet those standards.
So I'll echo what Commissioner Wood said a little bit. I mean, it was, this was sold to us as you came through, you know, just like the other things, just like the others. Well, Founder's Hall was way different than Old Sorrow. And I was, I didn't vote on Old Sorrow. I was on the commission then, but I didn't vote for it. And I don't know that I would have supported Founder's Hall. And the challenge is, when it was sold to us, oh, it's just like before. It really wasn't. The university is not leasing this back. You're not building the facility. Founder's Hall was built. There was a housing shortage. And my understanding is, rather than the university going to the Department of, you know, D. C., is it D. F. C. M. or D. C. F. M., one of the two, going to them and asking them to build the facility, it would cost maybe thirty percent more. So, so your foundation built that, and then the Levitts, or the university leased that from, from you. That wasn't, that wasn't true with Founder's, or the Sorrow, or, and it's not true with this project. So to say, so to come through all along and say it was, it's, oh, it's just one of those again. It really wasn't, so it's different. And, and the, even though the university, you know, they've, there's a lot of private sector people that are filling this void right now. There's a lot of people building college housing. And so I've just got some concerns, so. And I've expressed those to you, Tyler.
You have, yeah. So, yeah, when we go through, I can't speak, I wasn't around with Old Sorrow in the first two projects. So I can't speak to how that worked. But the, the funding mechanism is, our hopes is the exact same. There will be scholarship housing that goes to S. U. to benefit the students. That's what we've done with all of our housing markets. So that'll be consistent.
You have, we have a comment back here.
Yeah, I was going to say, anybody else? I know there's other folks in the room that are, are in the same realm, if anyone else has a comment.
Tyler Malling with Velocity. We actually have a couple of projects under construction right now in this same sector, same space. And, you know, I'm not opposed to this kind of financing. I guess one clarifying question I have, whether for Sam or for your bond counsel, is when, when I saw this item on the agenda, you know, we, we came today for the zone change, but saw this too, I looked up this, this act, and, and there are private sector projects, especially along the Wasatch Front, that have used this as well, specifically for railways and, and other, you know, public adjacent projects. And, but then the, you know, while the policy itself contemplates private sector possibilities that, that aren't associated with a nonprofit, the application does not. So I don't know if that's something that's in the works as well as far as if there was a, you know, a, a for-profit corporation that wanted to use this act and apply for financing. Is that something that's, I don't see it contemplated here with, with this one, but it looks like the policy contemplates it. Is that something in the works?
Only in the sense that we. Only in the sense that we've specifically excluded for-profit at this point. As if they were to adopt this policy right now, it would not contemplate that type of a, a request for a bond issuance.
Okay.
I mean, it couldn't in the future, but that's not a discussion that we've had with the commission.
Right. And, and I think maybe that would take care of some of the concerns for the commission as far as, you know, whether, you know, playing favorites or, you know, picking winning or losing projects or whatever else is, is, you know, opening this up. The act allows for, uh, for-profit business to also qualify. If you were to open that up for, and have an application for that, I know for us, the difference between private funding and, and municipal rates, um, you know, this is why we see PIDs and stuff 'cause, 'cause under current interest rates, I think it's about, uh, a quarter off your monthly payment on a twenty-year loan. You save about twenty-five percent, give or take. So it's, it's pretty steep, um, savings. And so if, if, if that were opened up to others, I think maybe that would take care of the, some of those concerns and, and allow projects to move forward.
I think, um, that there is some peril in that, uh, that would have to be, you know, presupposed in terms of a policy in that if you're going to do for-profit, how does that look in terms of the vetting? You know, what, wh- when, 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 you know, you're a five oh one C three or you're, you're, you're not for profit and you're doing something and there's an obvious public benefit, you know, I think, I think we just have to make sure that, and I'm not saying we couldn't, I'm just saying we'd have to make sure that, that the vetting also included that public benefit, you know, kind of as outlined, um, you know, down there a little bit further as far as, you know, how does the project help? You know, what is the public purpose for that project? I mean, if it's just a developer trying to make money, that's a little bit different. But I think, I think there is an argument, especially where you like, say, you're in the same area, you're same, in the same sector, you have the same type of, uh, building, you know, is there an argument that, that your employer could make to say, hey, we could qualify? And I'm assuming that's what you're getting at here.
Yeah. So if it's filling a public purpose that's underserved, I, I can't remember the exact language from the act, but it was something like that. Uh, and, and it, you know, I, I think it was industrial facilities, commercial facilities, infrastructure and, uh, uh, housing. And, and so if it, if it were drafted in a way that, uh, um, because whether someone makes money, money or not, you know, whether it's the taxpayer making money, whether it's the bank making money, whether it's the, you know, that's, that's not quite the same as what is the public good?
That's not the question, yeah.
If you're adding, uh, if you're meeting a need in the market that can't otherwise be met.
Would it create jobs or provide services that are currently under service? That third bullet point there.
Right. So, and, and that's all I, I didn't mean for it to, you know, into deep discussion, but, but I, I would encourage the commission to look at that as well and, and open it up, uh, to as many as possible if, if that's a, if, if the concern is, um, uh, you know, playing favorites.
I wonder.
The appearance of that.
Well, that brings up a, I had a, you know, just on some, uh, questions, you know, with this, I did have a, I did have a conversation with folks at the university. Uh, and, you know, they made it very clear that in this project, it was the university that approached the Levitt Group for this, you, you know, to, to construct this project. They also said we have this housing corridor and moving forward, we don't expect, uh, DOLF and the Levitt Group to, to, uh, fill that niche exclusively. We would expect Velocity or whoever else to provide the, provide the needed housing within that designated corridor. Uh, and so, I mean, I guess tha- that would bring to light another concern. You know, one thing that I wanted to make sure of was that nobody's categorically excluded, uh, under the, the, the current wording. I mean, it would basically exclude everybody else but the Levitts unless, unless there's charitable arms that I'm not aware of with other, with other developers.
Right. Yeah. Depending on the, my schedule, sometimes my arms are charitable. But, uh, no, and, and we could, you know, those could always be created as well. But it's, you know, the policies shape what the private sector does moving forward. So if, some predictability and, and, uh, ability to predict that in the future, especially where, you know, maybe a project has a projected three percent margin, that doesn't leave much wiggle room on rent. If, if you can expand that to thirty percent through savings on your interest payment, um, that leaves a lot of wiggle room for, uh, making it a little more affordable.
That's part of my problem with this, this project. I'm in this market a lot and, and you're, you're, you are picking winners and losers. Even though it's a nonprofit, it's, it's very difficult for, and, 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 and I trust Tyler, what he says, but if a nonprofit came in and, and got a lot of this and built, over flooded the market and then, and then, and then the market had trouble and, and rents had to be lowered to keep occupancy full, they could do that because they have such a huge advantage of, of this interest rate. It's a, like you said, it's about a twenty-five percent advantage and, and, and I've sold, I've sold my business to my son and I personally know of four or five projects that he's bid in the last while for student housing. There's, there, the private sector has stepped up big time.
Yeah, they're about six.
And my concern, and that's my biggest concern is, is, um, is picking winners and losers and, and giving huge advantages. Um, and that's, that's, that's been my issue. So.
All right. Thank you.
I just wanna put one more thing on the record. So when the, this is a charitable organization and a charity should give you the warm and fuzzies, right? And as we've gone through this process, we've realized that we're not giving a lot of people the warm and fuzzies. So I know the commission's aware of this, but, uh, so those that are interested in this, DOLF is not going to be building any more student housing. A resolution was passed by the board saying we fulfilled its purpose. Its purpose originated because SUU approached and asked us to, asked Dixie and Ann to build housing. And, uh, as Mr., as Commissioner Cousins, um, stated, the private sector is taking care of this. So we're not doing this anymore. This is our last project. Travis Towers has a phase two. We will not be developing phase two. We'll be looking for someone in the private sector to come in and fulfill that void. So I, this will be the last project, um, that, that we move forward and seek this funding on.
Good morning. This is a first for me in this, in this particular chamber. I've spoke many moons ago downstairs. So this is welcome. Last time I was in here was a speeding ticket in Parawan.
Uh-oh.
When it was the courthouse. Many years ago, twenty-five years ago. Judge Eves, I believe it was, or Adams, that's what it was. So the, um, you know, I support the concept of, of, of charitable. I mean, we do quite a bit of charitable giving and, 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 uh, and I, I think this is a noble gesture by the, the Levitt Foundation or the Dixie and Ann Foundation. They've, they've done a lot. However, I think this really screws up the free market system when we do this. The Levitts build beautiful buildings. They build very large buildings. Velocity does large buildings. A lot of developers do very large buildings and it pencils out when you figure the cost of issuance, issuance of the bonds and the, the, the administrative cost of doing something like this. But if a guy wants to just go out and build a six plex or an eight plex or a sixteen plex, all two bedrooms, I still have to compete. And as Paul said, when the market softens, and the market has softened in Cedar City, it's, I don't know how I compete with that. Because if I go build a sixteen or an eight plex or something like this, I can't afford to get this particular bond. So I'm not sure how we're operating on the same playing field. And so, but that's, that's my concern. I, like I said, if we're gonna do this, it shouldn't just be for nonprofits. It should be for everybody and there needs to be some way to bring the cost down to where it's viable for small developers or small landlords or large alike. I think it's, as, and Paul used the term picking winners and losers. I think that's what we do as a government agency is we pick winners and losers. We have some organizations within the county and I think they're statewide or nationwide, like example, the Housing Authority. They help fill that niche to some, to some degree. And, you know, for those who are quite destitute and so forth. Um, students, and I'm just being straightforward, that's a choice to go to college. It's, it's, it's not a mandate. It's not that we say, hey, we have to provide housing 'cause we're forcing you to go to school. And so we, they have to live in the rural world and we might as well start now when it comes to finance. I had to live in the rural world and, and, and my children have had to live in the rural world. My son, Charlie, uh, he went to school for virtually free, but he went to school because he served in the military. There are options for people if they want some affordable housing, affordable schooling and so forth. But I don't think that's the goal of our state legislature or role of our state legislature, our county commissioner, our city councils within the state. So I give my piece. Thank you.
Thank you.
I ha- I have a question. Is the, is the project started?
Yes, the, the project is
Under.
halfway done. I mean, we're three stories up.
Yeah. So to say, to throw us under the bus, saying that we're in the middle of it and this should have probably been done way, way before now in, in my mind.
If I threw you under the bus, I apologize. That was not my intent. I hope, I don't know what I said to
Well, I, I just mean,
Cause you to feel that way.
I just mean to say, well, we should approve it because we've known about it and we, you know, should have, should have approved it.
Yeah.
I, that, to me, that.
I don't walk into this room, no one, in my opinion, should ever walk into a government office thinking they're gonna get their way every time. That's not healthy democracy. I have no desire that I, that, that you should approve this just because I talked to you about it in December.
Yeah.
The purpose of me talking to you in December was twofold. First, to get your feelings because if the feelings were no, then we would go somewhere else. I didn't get that feedback. The second was to educate, to make sure that it wasn't anything that, uh, or to answer questions as it came forward. So it could go as smooth as possible. I, I do not believe that you should approve this just because the building is halfway up. That shouldn't be your role.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Cause that, you know, that's not what we should be able to do going forward. I, I, I feel like.
Yeah. My, my argument would be we, maybe wrongly, we depended on precedent.
Yeah.
How things went the last two times. But people change. There's elections. There's different things.
Different commissioners. Yeah.
Yep.
Absolutely.
So it seems to me that there's a couple of ideas floated around that might affect the process. I wonder if the commissioners have appetite for, or would like to even just change now, um, the idea of either taking out or expanding, um, this idea of only a five oh one C three can apply. I think that's kind of the first question. And if so, is there an appetite with the commissioners, I wonder, to allow the, the Levitts to at least move forward to a vote, um, so as not to perpetually push them back? I, I think there's a danger, it seems that if we don't clarify this point, then, then that's another meeting and then another meeting, you know? I wonder if, if there's an appetite amongst the commissioners to, to maybe follow Mr. Melling's idea and maybe consider making that a bigger umbrella.
I have that appetite. I'm not saying I'll support it, but I have that appetite to add that in. So it's a fair playing field.
Yeah, that, that's the, that's been my problem, my question all along, is do we categorically exclude anyone who's trying to do, you know, who's meeting the
Exact same thing.
Meeting the needs of the public. You know, I, if, if Velocity or, or Mr. Jet has a project that fits that need, I think that they should have every opportunity to be able to apply for the same consideration.
So are they able to do a geo-bond if they're not a nonprofit?
Geo is a little bit different type, but this is
I know, but not geo.
A conduit, yeah. So conduit bond is only, uh, when you kind of use the name of the municipality and it gives you that, that additional, 'cause it becomes a tax-free bond. And so you're, it, you're still going to the, to the market for bonding, but then it's, you, you get it, you get an advantage because your interest rate is lower? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I remind.
Yeah, come on. Yeah, please.
Since you didn't state your name last time, do it this time.
I didn't hear anybody state their name.
I thought you did state your name.
Maybe you did. Maybe I just.
And, and the same thing applies to housing. And, and so just keep that in mind. I don't have a problem if it's open to everybody in the world, but.
Charge. I, I think there is something to that. I don't know how to fix that. Um, the county could just choose to not pursue it at all and not allow for any of it. Things like that. And so
Yeah, that's good.
That's good. No, and, and we talked about the, we talked about taking away the food a long time ago. Because that, I mean, there's this huge, I mean, there's, I mean, sometimes there's thirty people show up to the meeting and everybody's there to
Have to feed them.
Expect lunch. And so we cut, we cut the food a long time ago, which
I ended up saving, I ended up saving us about anywhere from about two to four thousand dollars a year on food. So.
Good plan. Good plan. I like to hear that.
So, no, yeah, this, this is a really good thing.
Okay. We ready for a motion?
Absolutely.
I would move for an approval of the changes to the local emergency planning committee, L E P C, uh, bylaws of Iron County.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Betcha. Um, okay, do, did, do we have closed session stuff? I know that we talked about just putting that on the agenda. We put that on there, but do we need to have a discussion today? We do. Okay.
If not, just temporarily, briefly.
Okay. So let's skip that and go over, go to personnel.
Yep.
I hadn't heard anything, so.
Hello.
Greetings.
All right. Um, in the sheriff's office corrections, we were very fortunate when we were able to hire Roberto or Robert Leyva. Not only did we gain an experienced employee, but he was also able to bring his K nine partner Drax with him from his prior agency. So pending in-house training and certifications that are taking place within the next week or so, I'm seeking approval for Robert, um, Leyva to receive K nine promotion effective April fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. In the sheriff's office patrol, Justin Nelson has, um, elected to transfer from a full-time corrections deputy one to a full-time patrol deputy one bailiff effective four twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. In the auditor's office, Shaquille Benson was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant part-time deputy auditor, auditor accounts payable position effective four fifteen, twenty twenty-four. In the weed department, Don Hickey was selected to backfill the part-time seasonal weed sprayer effective four one, twenty twenty-four, and he lasted three days. Awesome. Um, in the landfill, Jerry Axel Robinson. Moving on.
I heard about that.
Yeah. Yikes. In the landfill, Jerry Axel Robinson was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill the vacant full-time landfill technician two position effective four fifteen, twenty twenty-four.
All right. Is there a motion to approve those things?
Okay. I'll, I'll move to approve, um, the issues under sixteen, personnel, A through E.
Second?
Moved in second and all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Entertain a motion on fifteen. Non-delegated? Do you wanna? Sure.
Oh, thank you.
I don't think we had anything.
I don't have anything in any of mine. I didn't.
Yeah, I didn't either.
No, non-de, I just wanted to make sure. No, non-delegated.
And we need
Give some, a motion on, 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 on,
two oh six one C, strategies and session to discussing, to disgusting, to discuss pending or reasonable imminent, uh, litigation.
Second?
Moved in second and all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
They got him in the room over there?
George entertaining them.
Good, good.
Okay, you're golden.
All right, we're back on the record.